Welcome everyone. I'm Chairman Matthew Long of the Woodbury County Board. We are excited to have the swearing in ceremony here of Mr. Mark Nelson. Here with his family, thank you all for coming. And would turn it over to the honorable judge for, to be honest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, Mark Nelson, am concerned that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duty of the office.
Of Board of Supervisors in Woodbury County, Iowa.
Of Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sign each of these right here.
Up here.
Right there. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would that be able to be a good time to get a quick little interview with you? It'll take about five minutes.
Sure.
Perfect.
I have something to talk about. Basically, but also my, uh, my, uh...
I would like to do just one.
I don't know.
I heard that, run away.
I guess that's fine.
Would that be able to be a good time to get a quick little interview with you? It'll take about five minutes.
Sure.
I have something to talk about. Basically, but also my, uh, my, uh...
I would like to do just one.
I appreciate the feedback.
I would like to do just one.
Basically, but also my, uh, my, uh...
I would like to do just one.
I would like to do just one.
I would like to do just one.
I don't think so.
So if you just want to go ahead and look at them, uh, go ahead and say to the other person last name for us. Do you want to mention W? I think you just love it. And so tell me, why did you decide to choose Mark Nelson?
Well, uh, yeah, well, I do that, too. I have a couple of, uh, I have a picture of him, and the author. He did a check out, and he did not call my name. I haven't announced it. Since we're still...
Since we're still...
Since we're still...
Since we're still...
So did you watch the candidate interviews? How did you feel about the candidates?
Yes, I did watch all the candidate interviews. I was appreciative of those wonderful people. I'm very grateful.
Before I said that, your death strategy makes a lot of sense.
You have the way that this one is on the table.
I've got something that, uh, I'm tired of seeing.
I've got a couple of work that I have to do.
I'm sorry.
I think all those things are really bad. Appreciate your support.
And by extension, we allow all these town hall meetings, and now a small round of...
We're all concerned about what has happened.
Just what would you like to see, you know, hit the ground running with your, uh, with the new supervisor of Old Beeville? What's going to be the topic of your...
Uh, well, the topic of the morning is to start by collecting, uh, from the United States for that. And we're interested in, uh, we discussed, and also we can get, uh, a lot of, uh, frankly, a lot of the most of the work that we've done.
Um, but I'm pretty glad we're back in the joint session. There'll be a lot of work that we've been asked to pass.
Oh.
Anything else?
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Well, we've talked about this.
We've discussed this.
I do have to do it.
I do have to do it.
So we've got to, uh, back in this...
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 Well, well, and that's even.
Well, we're down.
Is that all?
It's probably, uh...
It's a challenge.
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 You asked me to order. Please rise and join me in the budge of allegiance.
Let's read this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We've been seated. Remember to silence your cell phones.
Mr. Chairperson, we have a request that you receive the Drainage Stitch Canvas. It's strictly ministerial, so it does not need to appear on the agenda.
Yes. We have a canvassing we can hear about now, Mr. Hoffmeyer?
Yes, Steve Hoffmeyer, Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner of Elections. I've got the results here of the Farmers Drainage District election and the Garrettson Drainage District's election, plus the certificates of election and the abstract of votes for you guys to sign off on here.
Motion to receive. I'll make the motion to receive.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll sign these as we have moments throughout the meeting. Well, of course, welcome, Mr. Mark Nelson. It's good to have a Mark back on the board. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it unless there's any corrections or additions.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the January seventeen meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four, presented in an abundance of caution, given the rules, and the majority was asked for its consent last meeting. Is approval for Neapolitan Labs to participate electronically for the January thirty first, uh, meeting to give an update on the new county website. Item five from Human Resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, B, authorization to initiate the hiring process, C, approval of request to deauthorize county position, and D, approval of retiree requests to remain on the county dental insurance. And item six from the county auditor includes A, receive the appointment of Amanda Bennett as Floyd Township Clerk, B, receive the appointment of David Doral as the Odo Township Clerk, and C, receive the appointment to the vacant position of the District Three Woodbury County Supervisor, of course formally accepting that, um, swearing in of Mr. Mark Nelson. This completes the consent agenda. We can do this by one motion. These items on a consent agenda typically don't have, you know, backup cover sheets like this. As you'll see, summaries required. They're more ministerial and less, less of an issue, more routine, you could say. Any comments on the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item seven for information is from the Board of Supervisors, myself. This is an update on CF Industries' abatement schedule and tax revenue. Uh, the reason I have this item here is I wanted to, uh, give an update right before we had a budget discussion, which is the next item. And that budget review discussion is scheduled before the other budget review discussion items because I know Mr. Malloy has some place to be today and want to respect that schedule. Uh, but before we considered some improvement requests of his, um, I wanted the board to be cognizant of, uh, the abatement schedule for CF Industries. So, as stated in the item, uh, compared to last year, FY twenty-three, the county is realizing an additional two hundred and one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars in revenue for FY twenty-four that we're currently budgeting for. And then it will increase an additional two hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and forty-three, uh, next year when we budget for FY twenty-five. And, and, and under financial impact, you'll see what we're currently receiving is, uh, the county share being one point one million and next year the county share being one point three million, which is shown in the attachment. That schedule increases every year. We're in approximately year six of the twenty-year abatement. Is that correct, Dennis?
Yes.
And it, it just increases as we, as we know. So this is, uh, I bring this up because we, we have several different, um, one-time uses of funds we've been strategically deploying during this budget. Uh, over the last couple of years, we've taken a multi-year approach to budgeting to keep the tax rate from increasing as we build a, a law enforcement center. And, but this, this revenue here is something we should understand is, is new. This is new ongoing revenue. And so if we want to bookmark this in our, in our minds eyes, we look at improvement requests, um, I do believe the county budget will have, you know, will be able to be balanced or have the rate even slightly reduced, um, with the moves we're going to make over the next several weeks. We are very close. I believe we're, uh, under two hundred thousand dollars at this point away. So if we make some additions to the budget, uh, that are warranted and that are covered by this additional revenue, we can understand we have two hundred thousand extra, um, for budgeting purposes ongoing wise. Any, any thoughts?
My question's just for Dennis. Dennis, do you have the exact number of what the gap is that we have to close?
Yes, I do. It's a hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars.
And the board does have some additional items, uh, later on to, to make that picture even better. And we still have not touched a percentage point of our reserves, which are at historic highs. So I think we're in a good, good spot at this point in the budget.
Thank you.
Any, any questions on the CF, uh, abatement schedule? This is just a helpful resource to keep in mind where we're at.
I'm good.
Okay. Moving on to a single item of budget review discussion, Mr. Malloy, Chief Information Officer, WCICC. Uh, first improvement request, and for the benefit of Mr. Nelson, we, we typically dispense with the bulk of the budget, um, and all the departments before we kind of circle back and consider one at a time the improvement requests because, uh, we want to hash out the operating budgets, um, get those over with, and then we consider new spending requests. I believe all of the requests we're going to be considering today, Dennis, are ongoing. Is that correct?
Yes.
So there are no one-time requests. These are ongoing expenses, um, which will continue. So one reason I brought up the last item. So go ahead with, uh, item A, operating budgets.
Okay. What, uh, historically WIC or WCICC is, is, is a function of, or of city and county budget. Uh, the city, the county is, uh, invoiced for forty percent of our operating budget as of this year. Histor, the last three years, I think it's been at around forty-four percent. So there is a reduction in, in that assessment against, or that invoice that'll come to the county in FY twenty-four. What you'll see in front of you as far as an improvement request, um, Dennis has put together this sheet. Uh, what I've, what we're recommending with that improvement request is, uh, to look at a hosted data center for our compute and storage that we're, that we have housed upstairs. And if we go that route, the county can eliminate a hu- eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of capital improvement, uh, budget items from this current year and next year. And Dennis lays that out in this, in this chart. So as far as whether it would be a ten-year loan or a five-year loan.
I have broke that down into three proposals. The first and third proposal is stay at the current location, but shows a ten-year loan and a five-year loan and shows the items that we'd be borrowing for, four fifty and twenty-three and four hundred and twenty-four. The second proposal is the one we're recommending is have an annual lease, or I think you'd call it lease, a sixty-six thousand one oh eight annually, but it'd be offset a little bit through the savings of electricity in the courthouse. You know, uh, you think Pioneer Bank, it might save thirty thousand, so we just took half of that because we don't want to cut Kenny too short on electricity. And if we do run out of electricity, we gotta have electricity so we can amend it. So the net would be fifty-one thousand five fifty-two. Now, the only way that sixty-six thousand one oh eight would go up is if they increased electrical rates. So when you compare proposal one and, first one and third one to number two, on the second page, you can see the first one would save five hundred and sixty-eight thousand on a ten-year loan. If we go that route and leave it here, it costs us five hundred and sixty-eight thousand more. If we go the, uh, proposal number three, do a five-year loan, we'd save two hundred and fifty thousand by going with a ten-year lease. And the sixty-six thousand one oh eight would be budgeted under page eighteen where we have Tyler budgeted and also the operating share of running upstairs, WCICC. This does not include improvement requests, which we'll get to later. The wages, things like that. But this number sixty-six one oh six is embedded in CIP, so that eliminates one problem there by going this route.
Do you have a preference?
As far as lease length or loan length or, or...
Proposal length?
I...
Proposal in general?
Yes, I definitely want to move our compute and storage. It makes very little sense to invest a short million dollars into a hundred-year-old building. A private facility can do it much better than we can. And then in ten or twelve years, you're going to be updating some of the same equipment that we're talking about in this current fiscal year and a next fiscal year. So...
So that's then the second proposal, to move to a different location with annual cost?
Yes.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah. And the net of that, uh, you'll, you'll see, there's, there's two costs, Dennis, or one cost that Dennis referred to is the electricity. They anticipate a short thirty thousand is our electrical cost and they'll bill us actuals. So we took fifty percent of that as a conservative approach that the county should net. Um, we expect that to be better than that. Also, the estimated fiber lease, we, my guys upstairs have come up with some different proposals. We think that number's going to be slightly lower as well.
Well, you'd have to estimate the power would probably be the same if it was here or if we're paying somebody else to do it. So that's probably a wash in reality. So you're looking at thirty-seven thousand a year.
Correct.
You know, in rosy glasses.
Yes, correct. And Kenny compared the rates, the rates between the two facilities are the same. So whatever we're charged here will be charged at the other, other site.
So if I just simplify this, the first and third proposals are around a million dollars each and the second proposal's five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars total.
Correct.
And is the recommendation of the director?
Yes.
I think it's a no-brainer then.
That's what Dennis said.
Yeah. Smartest one ever.
But ass comes from you.
Unless there's any other...
No, I agree. Everything I, I mean, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, I've been reading, we've talked, and I've talked with my own friends that are in your, in the line of IT. This has seemed like to be what the industry's going to, is off-site...
Correct.
...data storage, housing for your, for main infrastructure. And so I agree, Jeremy, yes, yeah, it's a no-brainer save. I would go for off-site data housing.
Is there some kind of security liability protection that comes with all that?
Yes, is my understanding. And then Kenny won't have to mount a generator on the top of the courthouse.
Kenny wasn't going to do it himself anyway.
Uh, he, he was asking for help, but some weekend, so...
And where are these, just remind me where the funds are coming from ultimately for this?
They'll come out of General Basic Fund. It'll be under the operating budget on page eighteen of your budget book under Supervisors. You add a million one thirty-one four oh three for the operating, and that's tentative. Depends what the city does with their side. And also a hundred and fifty-five thousand with Tyler Software is budgeted. We didn't know if it was for sure, but it is budgeted.
But is this annual payments through CIP, the fifty-one thousand five fifty...
That will come out of General Basic because the recurring cost...
Is it budgeted for right now?
No, we have to add it.
Okay, so...
So I'll go on the tally, she is a negative.
Okay.
Yep.
As a whole, it's still down from last year, though, isn't it?
Yes.
Where we were at a reduction from last year before.
And, yeah. Oh, it's a reduction from last year, but we haven't done the C, or the improvement request for salary or position increases yet. But a lot of those have gone through and they've been eliminated somewhat. There's a couple there we will have to put in there in the CIP. Or probably go into his budget because I think the recurring costs, aren't they?
For which ones, uh?
The two in the, uh, improvement requests.
For the city?
Yeah.
The city, the city is...
The cost here.
Yeah, the city has tentatively approved two improvement requests. One for, um, a SEEM solution system event and whatever, management system. And MXDR, it's a, it's twenty-four by seven monitoring of our, our entire infrastructure.
Does the city have to concur with what we do today in order to make this happen for you?
Yes, they would. Yes. But that hearing is until February fourth on my operating budget over there.
But, but on this proposal, this is between you and the county.
Correct.
So you have anything to say about this?
Yes, this, yeah. This proposal's purely county, yes. Based on the twenty eighty, yeah.
And the other benefit is I did put in for two point seven million, I believe, for our capital improvement loan this May. If we do the lease side of it, I take four hundred and fifty thousand off of that project, or the cost for CIP loan. So we're actually gaining probably eighty to a hundred thousand by time you put five percent interest over five-year loan. So we are gaining there. This will balance itself. We'll decrease the debt service. It'll cover the increase in General Basic for this item.
Anything else to add, Mr. Malloy?
Not regarding that subject, no.
Hearing nothing further, I'd move the second proposal.
My second motion by Taylor. Any discussion or questions?
Technically, we're, are you moving eight A with an increase of fifty-one five fifty-two? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, to accept the improvement requests.
Well, your increase is sixty-six one oh eight. That's what the lease payment is. The fifteen thousand could be saved when you go back and reduce the, and the way we set this up, we can review any budget at the end here through budget review at the end of today. So the fifteen thousand will take off at the end of the day.
So you're calling this part the improvement request, which is, is that eight B, or is that a separate improvement request?
That is eight B, because we still have improvement requests down below, which will consider the rest his unless you want to go through his now. He has to leave, so it's probably better off do his improvement requests now. So you want to go back to the handout I got in your packet.
I'm just saying procedurally for the agenda here, sorry, my mic's off. Procedurally for the agenda, are, you know, so we're moving proposal B, so that would be to receive eight A with an increase of six, sixty-six thousand one oh eight then?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that clear? Any other discussion?
Can I just?
Yes.
Sorry. Why isn't sixty-six one oh eight?
That's the lease payment, he has to pay out his budget, but with a net of reducing the electricity over in the courthouse budget by fifteen thousand, it'll net, or fourteen thousand five fifty-six, it'll net fifty-one six sixty-two. But you have to budget the sixty-six one oh eight to pay for the lease that year, but the fourteen comes off on the other side on electricity and billing services.
Got you.
So on Kenny's budget, did we have that figured in or not?
It's dependent on this, so that's later.
Yeah.
So then we can reduce that later?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that at the end of the meeting here. Under other budget reviews here.
Thank you. Wouldn't cut off power until we moved the data, would we?
Right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero. Item B, improvement request.
Think I included it in there, but if I didn't, it is back on, go back to your improvement request at the back of the book. There at the back there, it's the last tab, and you'll see, and we're only going to do WCICC currently, we'll go through the rest later here when it's on the schedule. But we want to get these done, so he can make his appointment here. So in this case here, is everybody back there to the back? You'll see under improvement request for fiscal year twenty-four, that he has a line of items there. And John, you can go through those, because there were a lot of these deleted. There's two we gotta add, and the rest are all deleted, as I understand.
Is this the CIP request, Dennis, or is this the?
This is back here.
So is page eleven the summary of all five there?
Okay, yep. So I think the first, one, two, three, four, the first five were not approved by the city. The only ones that were approved by the city was forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-six five hundred, and I believe those are annual costs, so we'll have to add those on to the budget we just approved.
So what page are those ones on?
That's the beginning of the improvement. Improvement request, there at the back into your book.
That's in the affairs office, is page one. Page eleven is WCICC, looks like a summary of five.
Well, this page should have been included back up in the budget here.
No, it's not that.
It isn't in there?
No.
It's in the back of the budget books.
Like where?
Uh, page eleven.
No, it's not what he showed.
I thought I had this one included in the board package. We're just doing WCICC currently on this.
Five hundred and eighty-seven thousand is the total.
Okay, now, that's the CIP that you're looking at there, if it's five eighty-seven.
Okay. So that's under CIP, not improvement request.
So, John, are you looking at senior systems analyst to manager approving that?
I had submitted five personnel.
Right.
Improvements, and then three other ones, and then we added this hosted data center for nine improvements. What the city does is they go through a city manager filtering process, and he has tentatively accepted two of those items, and that's the forty-six five Dennis had mentioned, and what is it, sixty-six?
Sixty-six five for total one hundred and thirty thousand.
But that still has to meet the scrutiny of the council meeting here in a couple weeks.
So which pages do we disregard, Dennis?
Well, I thought I put the summary page in there for everybody to look at.
Page eleven.
Page eleven has the list.
Page eleven has five positions, is that what we're talking about?
And again, those aren't under consideration right now.
Okay.
We're just trying to look for what we're looking for.
Okay, here's another, another one there, I thought they were in your packet.
Okay, these are the same. What's the total of what's being asked of us to consider right now?
What's being asked you consider to approve is the forty-six thousand five hundred and a sixty-six thousand five hundred. The rest of the top five there are going to be disallowed, and the sixty-seven one sixteen, and actually sixty-six one oh eight, after recalculated, this was done before we did the recalculation here. So that one's taken care of.
So it's just these two, the S I E M?
Yes.
And MXDR?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
That's it.
Yes.
And those are annual costs, so we probably pay those out of his regular budget for paying Tyler, or paying the sixty-six thousand, and its operating costs. They're annual costs, right?
Correct.
So.
Okay, let's do S I E M, it's page seventeen. Want to talk that, John?
Yeah, what that does is, it's a service, it's a, software's a service, we would shoot all of our logs, our system logs, from all of the hundreds of systems that we have, we aggregate and collect those, and they, they have software that would constantly interrogate those logs and have a, have a knock or a operations center that would monitor those logs and, and give out warnings in the event there's some unscrupulous behavior going on. So that's what that system does, and that came out as part of our risk assessment, risk assessment that we had done by ProCircular, or in year two of a three-year contract with ProCircular, or they're our security consultant. And MXDR is a more holistic monitoring, it's, again, it's twenty-four by seven monitoring of our entire environment.
So this is an annual cost, every year ninety-three thousand?
Yeah, you see these, all these AASs, software as a service, infrastructure as a service, disaster recovery as a service.
And is that for up, just as a software upgrades, or is that a, a service fee?
It's a, it's a service fee to be, they'll monitor our systems twenty-four by seven is, is what will be happening.
Do you have a ranking on these as far as department importance?
Yeah, MXDR would be first for me.
And why is that?
Just because it's a holistic approach, and again, the twenty-four by seven appeals to me as far as monitoring of our systems. If you do the math, we're in the office twenty to twenty-five percent of the week, a lot of bad stuff can happen in that other seventy-five to eighty percent of the time. And we have emails, text messages, and so forth, going out to our security group, you know, whenever we're having an anomaly, but again, there'll be real-time monitoring.
Was this a pitch by ProCircular, a specific recommendation, or did you go out and look at options and decide yourself what looks best?
Yeah, and ProCircular was used as the budget item, it's not necessarily the firm that we'll go with. Yes, and that was one of the, they had eight recommendations for us that I'd presented to the commission here last week or the week before, and that's one of the top eight.
Are either of these, and I'm, I'm not a tech guy, are either of these duplicative? Are there overlaps between the two? Are they completely separate? We're looking at this and we're looking at that.
I'm going to give you yes with a question mark. Until we get into it, I would not know. Again, I imagine there is some crossover, because they're going to be monitoring those logs as well. They're two separate functions. I, I can't give you a, a great answer, because I haven't experienced either system. I just know SEEMS, if you do it in-house, they typically don't work. You have to have a person or persons monitoring that log information, and it's, I mean, there's millions of, of system logs that come across.
But you're asking for a both and, not neither or, is that right? You're asking for?
I asked for nine of them, so.
But between these two, you, you think it's necessary to have both the S I E M and MXDR in order to have the protection that the county and the city need?
According to the risk assessment, that's what I was asking for, yes.
Who did the risk assessment?
ProCircular did.
Okay. How would any of this affect any cyber insurance or anything? Would that be something that would benefit us on that end?
Absolutely. The screws keep getting tighter, each, each, the, the requirements are, become more rigorous every year.
I can't remember, what, what do we pay a year in cyber insurance? Forty thousand?
It's not the cost of the cyber insurance, it's the cost of when something happens.
I know.
Yeah. And I know you know that, but, yeah.
It's just to know those numbers.
Yeah. Again, it's just an insurance policy to mitigate that risk. Again, it's all about risk.
Well, and, I mean, from my end, when I look at these kind of numbers, you know, I see the potential of an annual cost to equal that of two employees or an employee and a half, depending on which department, and.
Sure.
You know. Curious as to the rest of the boards. You know, I wouldn't mind adding one this year, like the MXDR, and at least that's my opinion, but, and I, I understand your position, I mean, you would obviously want.
Again, I'm just here to make recommendations, and you guys can determine what's appropriate, what is not.
It just gets to a certain point where every seven years between the city and the county, we're spending a million dollars on just that alone, you know, so.
Yep.
You spend it proactively or reactively, I guess.
Yeah, and we're, we are relying on the city's endorsement as well, and.
Right.
I don't know if they'll have the same questions we do about what's your top priority, and if we're on the same answer, perhaps that's helpful.
I would give the same answer to them, as, as far as the MXDR, if I had to choose between the two. In fact, I asked that question to my team here a lot, a couple weeks ago, if we have to choose which one, so.
Dennis?
You can't wait until you find out what the city's desire is also before you approve both of them, one of them, or none of them, because we still handle that.
They can, they can say the same thing.
Probably. Didn't they, they didn't concur to two, these two?
I do not have my budget here until February fourth with the city, for the operating budget.
Was it, who was it that said, was it the city manager in the vetting process that said he'd be supportive of two, is that?
As of right now, yes. But again, depends where they're at as well.
I would, I would support the priority MXDR from this board, and I, I would think that if the city was to approve both, then perhaps the following meeting, we'd have time to consider if we want to support that. That's my opinion.
I think that's a reasonable approach, so.
Is that kind of where you're going towards strategic?
Well, at least the first part.
Yeah.
I would, I would be in, in support of both, but I'm with you, with you, Matthew, I think let's see what, sort of the MD, MD MXDR, but I think regarding technology and programs like this, I've seen it at our church, we, our, our office computers were hacked from China, completely locked everything out, and we've had to beef up everything, re-buy programs, which we don't always want to buy or spend on, but I think in light of the size of the county, and what's going on in national tax, cyber tax in America, I think, I think to protect us, I know I don't like spending this much money on a program that's annually, but it, one, one case, one hit, one, we're, we're locked out, we're done, and so I, I think a strong offense, let's, let's beef up security, we might take, but let's look at maybe what you're proposing.
Mr. Nelson?
So if I heard you correct, you said you weren't quite sure what overlapped there would be between the two systems that MXDR may overlap a little bit? Okay, I guess, so my, my preference would be then that we move forward with MXDR today, and we kind of wait and see what all that gives us, and then we can reevaluate, and we can always add another system. I, I know exactly with what you're saying, I run e-commerce business, I know that cybersecurity is a terrible, just a necessary evil, but I, that's, that's where I would be today, is to support the MXDR and wait on the other one.
I'll move approval of MXDR to county share cost of sixty-six thousand five hundred.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Same source of funding as the last item, Dennis.
Yep, it'll be on his operating budget, on the general basic.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero. Item C is CIP request.
Right, so based on your first item today, with that first improvement request, the hosted data center, you can remove four hundred thousand from that CIP request for this year. And you can remove the four hundred and fifty thousand that we had allocated for this year.
The net effect of reducing it this year will be we have to borrow less, which will reduce our pencil and interest costs.
For this coming fiscal year?
Yeah, we'll do it this year, but we borrow May to be paid, start paying next year. So it'll help us offset some of this.
For FY twenty-four?
Yes, tax asking debt service.
What is the budget impact precisely, do you know?
Four hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy, five by five, probably about eighty-five, ninety thousand.
Okay.
It'll save us in debt service, so again, that'll help offset the cost here we're paying for that software, or the sixty-six thousand. And the next year's CIP is all, we're just going through them to receive them, but they're all approved after July first, as needed. And we don't borrow for that till May of twenty-four.
So again, this has a FY twenty-four budget impact of relieving ninety thousand?
Yeah, and a debt service fund.
And a debt service fund?
Yes.
Were there any other changes other than the four fifty?
No.
Okay.
And like I say, all these here, that's in the blue, is all, you just receive them, all these eventually when you get to them, but these here, you just receive it and then prove them on a one-on-one basis next year, starting July first.
So in our budget books, core switches was on FY twenty-four. The generator was on twenty-three.
Yeah, the generator's what's going to affect this current year, which we borrow for and start paying in twenty-four. The stuff you're seeing for twenty-four CIP will be borrowed in May with a tax starting up in twenty-four, twenty-five. So anything in twenty-four is just basically to look at, make you aware of what's could happen. Twenty-three will have a direct effect on our tax asking, such as eliminating the generator.
What was the core switches, what was that again, as far as the distribution?
That is the, that's sort of the brains, as far as how the signals get out to all of our facilities, and we implemented those like four years ago, and just the speed keeps increasing, the demands keep increasing, stuff like this, AVI cameras.
What's the additional tech room monitoring?
That's for the cameras in our, it's for basically surveillance in our. That's for the cameras in our, it's for basically surveillance in our, all of our tech closets throughout, throughout the county.
Guess I'm curious as to, has there been an issue in the past or are we just preparing?
For what, the surveillance? It's replacing, I think, I think a lot of our units are eight, nine, some are ten years old already. And they've, way exceeded their life expectancy, so.
So the motion is to receive the C I P minus the allocation for the C I P generator at four hundred and fifty thousand?
Uh, the four and fifty be this year, what we're eliminating next year would be the-
Three fifty.
Three fifty.
And UPS, we don't have to replace our UPS either.
So on the blue sheet, we're eliminating four hundred thousand for twenty-four.
Got it.
Or technically adding one eighty-five, or one eighty-seven?
Correct.
With the reduction of four fifty from the previous year, so we're kind of a net ahead.
Well, these here, if you're waiting to prove, if you're receiving them today, you're waiting to prove them next year.
Right.
So this doesn't have any effect on our actual tax asking for twenty-four. The four fifty this year, yes, it does.
So I'll receive the one eighty-seven, hundred and eighty-seven thousand, which is core switches, backup storage, tech room monitoring and ring update.
Second. Any discussion?
So the, these two, then?
Yeah, those are not needed because of-
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Yep, and congratulations on the new website. Thank you for that funding and welcome Supervisor Nelson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to our regular agenda, we have item nine from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nera, being filled in for by Ben Kuzler. Approve the final voucher for Project Perrin One Thirty-Six with Knife River LLC.
Good afternoon, Ben Kuzler, Secondary Roads. This is a one point nine million dollar resurfacing project on D thirty-eight from Bronson to K sixty-four. And the D O T and the contractors have finally fulfilled the audit. So we're signing final documents today and I think the total amount coming out of the foreign market fund is like three dollars, so.
I move approval.
Second?
Motion by Rags, second by Taylor. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. All right. Next item is ten from the county attorney, Mr. Loomis. For action, this is approval of requests for the board to take action on certain proposals to address six vacant attorney positions. I think I'll preface this while you're getting to your notes, Mr. Loomis. It'd be nice if the board could settle all the hanging questions on the M O U today. And if we can, then we can put that on the record. But barring that, in the interest of efficiency, it may be prudent for the county board to signal its intent to support proposals by identifying the dollar amounts involved. And later on in this, in this meeting, during the budget process, increasing the budget by the requisite amounts and kind of leaving it up to the process at that point. But we do need to go over the issue for the new supervisor, of course. Dennis, did you have something? Okay, you were, you were looking really interested.
Employee had a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, good evening, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity again to be with you and speak with you again regarding this. I was here back on January tenth to inform the board kind of the situation that the county attorney's office is facing. And so I don't feel the need to kind of rehash all of the things that we talked about and discussed back on January tenth. The board is aware that we do have another attorney that's retiring from the office and that will take effect on February tenth. So as of February tenth, our office will be down six attorneys and six out of eighteen is a significant number of attorneys. And as I said before, the, the impact that that's going to have is really something that we need to address. And it's not here, and I'm not here to be an alarmist about anything. I'm just here to kind of paint the picture of what the reality is that my office is facing and what needs to be done. And so my effort is, is simply and only to procure quality applicants. As I discussed last time, in six months, we've had four applicants. We've had a fifth applicant since we last spoke. But the fact remains that we've had five applicants now in six months. And I think that a hindrance to that is the compensation package. And so some of my efforts or all of my efforts are geared towards kind of what I think we can do to draw in applicants to fill those vacant positions. And my, my goal, as we talked about last time, was both long-term and short-term. My long-term proposals that I'm asking for. The first is to create an internship program within our office that's paid that in my opinion would allow for a potential pool of applicants down the road that we know, that we've worked with, that we believe offer something good potential to our office. And, and so I think that it's something that our office has never had, but I believe that it's something that we need to do. We need to take that step and, and not only afford what hopefully our aspiring prosecutors to continue in that field, but again, to generate potential applicants should those openings happen in our office down the road. And so we have followed up on that. There is a, a matching fund program through the Attorney General's Office that we can make application through that's twelve hundred dollars that if approved would come back from the Attorney General's Office. My plan would be to hire an intern at forty hours a week at eighteen dollars an hour. In my conversations with various folks, the range is between fifteen and eighteen dollars an hour for those hires. To me, that cost seems pretty minimal. If you're talking about approximately twelve weeks of employment for that intern, you know, specifically, you know, eighteen dollars an hour, forty hours a week. For twelve weeks, you know, you're probably looking around ten thousand five hundred dollars somewhere in that neighborhood for total expense with a twelve hundred dollar matching program from the Attorney General's Office. I, I don't know, you know, I can't guarantee that that would be approved by the Attorney General's Office that we would receive those matching funds or the reimbursement of twelve hundred dollars. But even worst-case scenario, you know, you're talking about ten thousand five hundred dollars, you know, some, and if we do have those matching funds, you're talking about probably ninety-three hundred dollars. So nine thousand to ten thousand five hundred dollars, that cost seems pretty minimal to me, in my opinion. Granted, it's, it's still money and it's still money that needs to be spent, but I think that it's money that is well-spent. And so I am asking for that approval on that part. The second long-term goal that I had was to create a second deputy position. And I know the board was gracious enough to kind of bring that up last week. And if I understood it correctly, that the funding was approved for that position. My request is that that position be authorized so that we can move forward immediately with two deputy attorney positions. As it currently sits, we have one with Mr. Campbell's retirement. I just need that flexibility to have those two positions. Again, kind of reiterating, it seems likely that our office is going to be very young and inexperienced. And I need to have those folks in place that can assist myself with moving the offers forward and being able to handle what we need to handle and serve the, the way that we need to serve. And so I'm asking for the board to approve that second position tonight and so that we can appoint Mr. Bock instead to that second deputy position. I just, overall, in my vision for what the office needs to look like, I need to have that position in place and so I can move forward with the new hires and that I can have that ready to go with those new hires. And so I am asking for that as well in terms of what my long-term vision is and, and walking out what the office, what I want the office to look like.
Dennis, did we not approve that already?
Yes, you did. In fact, you approved it today, so number two has been approved.
Okay.
Approved the salaries in the H R memo.
Thank you.
And you proved it last week and we did, just taking the one turn out and putting in seven, eight, nine percent. Two is done.
Two is done. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Melissa, for that as well.
May I back up to number one briefly? Process on approving this, is there any reason why the board cannot simply approve this? Or do we individually approve through memorandum or is this an M O U process?
I don't think this needs to be an M O U process. I just, I just think that it's, it's money that's gonna overlap both the remainder of fiscal this year into next year by a couple of months.
I'm seeing disagreement in the gallery, so we'll circle back.
Circle back, all right.
So just to clarify, can we go back to a number one also for just a moment? So for the internship position, assuming that there's no funding from the state, what would you need in terms of dollars to, to fully fund that internship position? Ten thousand?
Ten thousand, ten thousand five hundred is what my kind of estimate would be.
And does the board need to even authorize this? Or is this something that the county attorney could do on?
Well, it's, it's not specifically in the budget and it hasn't been specifically in the budget. So my, my thought is that in an effort to be upfront and to let everyone know kind of what I want to do is to bring it before the board for approval so that there isn't anything that seems that I'm doing anything untowards or doing anything outside of what I'm authorized to do. So that's the reason that I'm bringing it forward.
And this is a paid position with the county which would need board approval?
Come through on a P A form. It's basically temporary help.
Thank you.
One, one position?
What's that, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, one position?
Yes, one position.
Move to th- uh, three now.
So for short-term plans, short-term proposals that were discussed last time, the first being a four percent retention wage increase through the use of ARPA funds that I think would incentivize applicants, that's the reason for, for that request. And those numbers were put together in exhibit number one as part of my application. Those projections were provided by Ms. Scaff from the auditor's office to kind of give the board an idea of what that would mean. But again, I think that that is a, an immediate way to kind of incentivize the position to draw in more applicants, which again is the goal here.
Michelle, could you? Michelle, could you verify the expense?
In reference to the four percent-
Yes.
-increase. Yes, this is what I shared.
That's the twenty-five thousand eight thirty-six?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand nine oh eight sixty-six.
Okay.
The twenty-eight nine oh eight sixty-six would be if everyone received the four percent increase effective payday two-ten of twenty-three, which if this were approved immediately, this would be doable to, for the payroll.
For this fiscal year?
Yes.
What about next fiscal year? What would be the continuing?
For fiscal year twenty-four, the increase would be seventy-three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine, which would increase the fiscal year twenty-four budget from what was already projected.
I mean, the board's more interested in that number since there's obviously over four hundred thousand of carryover.
Right. And the odds of him filling all the positions by July first are gonna be very, very difficult.
Right.
So even in next year's budget, he's gonna have enough left over probably to cover this expense for twenty-three, twenty-four. Twenty-four, twenty-five, but Swinna will hit us through taxation.
Okay. And that's for all current employees?
The fiscal year twenty-four amount is for all current and unfilled positions and that was before the percent deputy was added and it was reduced by one attorney.
Okay.
The fiscal year twenty-three is... I'll, I'll have to double-check that. I believe that it includes the unfilled on that also.
Okay.
Does the eighteen in your office include you, James?
It does.
Okay.
It does. Anything else from any of the members on, on that point? I think I'm gonna skip point number two and come back and discuss that in a bit. Point number three, to start new hires with one week of vacation in the bank and to begin accrual right away. I think that that is, is needed to draw in what people expect and want as employees. And as Mr. Taylor kind of aptly pointed out last time we spoke, is that it really isn't an added expense. It's just kind of a, a deficit within our office that we incur when someone's not there, that they would otherwise be there. I guess is one way to look at it. So I am, it's something that I am willing to, to have. I'd rather have competent bodies in the office with taking some vacation time versus obviously not having any bodies in the office to take no vacation time. And so I am asking for approval on that.
Is one week pretty comparable?
I think given what we have right now, which is none, I do. And as, as a general matter, I, I think that that's kind of a fair way to split the difference. I don't know as it's comparable to private practice in my conversations with, with some folks. But I also understand the need to balance everything here and to not come in asking for the world, but to be reasonable in my request. But I do think that it's comparable and reasonable given kind of my discussions with other, other folks about what, what are received, what new hires get and receive. And then the fourth item that I have is, is a, is a fifteen hundred dollar retention payment bonus, I guess is a way to look at it, for all current attorneys and for all new hires at the end of, of one year, which is different than what I talked about before. When I spoke last on January tenth, it was geared more towards new hires and a way to promote new hires. Some, there were some concerns expressed by the folks in my office about that. And I am asking the folks in my office to take on a lot of extra burden. And so that is the reason for my slight change in request for that kind of retention bonus for all the attorneys in the office and then for new hires at the end of one year. Again, as a way to kind of incentivize that. The, the cost of that was done by Ms. Scaff from the auditor's office as well and that's laid out in exhibit number two. If you know, just to let you know, I sometimes say exhibits- If you know, just to let you know, I sometimes say exhibits because that's just my practice and that's what I do. So exhibit one and exhibit two are my evidence for the board tonight. So exhibit two is kind of the cost for that fifteen hundred dollar retention payment. It's my understanding and is my discussions with Dennis that that would be done through ARPA as well.
It's technically be about twenty-five thousand five hundred because you couldn't include the attorney himself, so.
Right.
So fifteen hundred times seventeen.
And we use ARPA funds that's a one-time retention pay. It's not reoccurring.
Dennis, can we also use ARPA funds for a potential four percent as long as we're, we're backfilling it the, the next year with tax funds?
Yes, we're raising the base pay and all the rates to keep as a retention incentive.
Right.
Why, this will be reflected next year in the budgets.
So really, if, if it passed muster and we were talking about approximately twenty-eight thousand from FY twenty-three and seventy-three thousand from FY twenty-four for a four percent increase payable by current ARPA funds for retention pay, that would not even have an impact on the carry, carryforward balance?
No.
And that would be, you know, my preference to, so we don't, you know, I mean, it's a use it or lose it situation with those funds.
Mm-hmm.
So if we're going to do it anyway, it's, I'm just trying to figure out the budgetary impact.
Right.
And these seem to be outside of it. If it passes muster and if it's approved. The only thing that so far is a cost to the county is?
The one we already did?
Yeah, the one we already did and the, and the intern for ten thousand five hundred for twelve weeks.
Correct.
Okay.
Because you can't do the intern on ARPA?
I'm going to check into that.
I don't know about that.
I doubt it because it's going to be reoccurring.
Well, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I would want to continue to do the program beyond just the one year.
Sure. Yeah. I don't think it's.
No, I just go with twenty-eight to twenty-five.
Twelve-week internships a quarter of the year, would you want to do multiple in a year or are you talking one per year?
Well, in my experience and my personal experience is that it's best suited to do it during the summer months. That's when I did it, that we interviewed in the fall, we found a candidate and then they began kind of at the end of that semester, that second semester, spring into early summer and versus trying to do it during the winter months when technically I suppose that that's possible, but my preference is to just kind of get this program up and running with one and it seems easiest and most suitable to me to do that kind of at the end of a school year for those young people to do that.
Okay.
Looping back then and talking with point number two, this is a proposal that I put forth to start new hires at kind of a, a step equal with what their experience is. Currently, the contract, the union contract says, states that the county attorney cannot start, start anyone higher than step four. My example that I used last time was that if someone has six years of, of experience that seems deserving of starting them at step six, that I would like to be able to start them at step six. I know that there are some concerns by some of the folks in the office about that and so I don't want to misspeak about that specifically, but I, I would share with the board that I know that there are some concerns about this proposal specifically and the implications that it will have. My intention is not to treat anyone unfairly that's already in the office, nor is it to create an environment of, of future problems. That is not what I'm here to do. I am here to try and solve a problem, but I will say that I will obviously let the, the union rep speak if, if that is desired, but I will say that there is some concern with, with this proposal and the implications that it will have and how it's going to impact those in the office. So I still think that having that flexibility, particularly because, as I said before, at the end of the day, we're almost assuredly going to be a very young office that needs a lot of training and a lot of direction. And if someone is, is open to coming that has experience, I think that it would behoove us to be able to kind of compensate them accordingly. But again, the union contract is what it is. I'm not here to renegotiate the union contract. I'm not here to step in the middle of a landmine. I'm not here to do any of those kinds of things or make any problems for the board, my office, or anybody. Again, what I'm trying to do is simply be proactive and find solutions to what I think is a hindrance to applicants. So that's kind of where I am. Obviously, I'm seeking approval for, for these items. I would certainly ask for input. There are folks from my office here, there is the representative from the union here as well. I am open to any criticism, constructive criticism. I am open to other thoughts and other ideas. I don't pretend to have all, all the good ideas or have all the answers. This is simply an effort to move forward and I guess I'll, I'll leave it to the board in terms of where we want to go from here. If you want to talk with Melissa, I think Melissa's always been helpful, or if you want to speak with anyone from the, the union that's here to represent the attorneys from our office to us as well, I would turn that over to them at this point.
I would like to hear from others, but before that, is there any other questions for Mr. Loomis? Yes?
So just so I understand, I haven't rolled up my sleeves and deep dove into the union contract, but if someone in your office has six years of experience, are they at step six?
No. The county attorney is only permitted to start them at step four is the highest that you can start somebody at.
But if, yeah, if they started in the county office, they would be at step six after six years.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that what?
Yeah, right, right, right. So essentially what you're, just, so I understand, if somebody had six years, let's say in Manona County, they wanted to come over here, you're asking to be able to value that person's experience equally by starting them at the same step that they would otherwise be at had they started here in Woodbury County? Is that a fair?
That's fair.
Okay.
And, and primarily my focus is prosecutorial experience. I'm, you know, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate that someone who's done wills and estates for twenty years and they want to decide they want to be a prosecutor to bring them in and start them at step twelve because they've got twenty years' experience as a lawyer. That's really not what I'm looking to do here. I, I'm, I'm looking for experience that matters to the position.
Yeah.
Can I ask Mr. Attorney and the rest of the board? It seems like there's five different things, four out of the five which may be assented to and maybe there's one or two that wouldn't, but could we take the ones that are not controversial or that are agreed to or? I'm thinking about the, the bonuses, the one week of vacation. Is there anybody objecting to those things?
And then abundance of caution, Mr. Taylor. I appreciate that. I, I would defer to those within my office and from the union just to make sure that they've got anything. I don't believe that those are controversial. I don't believe that there's anything necessarily that they're opposed to that, but again, I don't want to speak for, for anyone within my office, nor do I want to speak for the union. And so I, it's my understanding, I don't think that there's really any issue with, with those, but I, I would ultimately defer for any further discussion from those parties involved directly.
And I guess that would be my hope is that if we could go through and everyone's copacetic with three of them or four of them and then maybe there's one that needs some further work on the, the step, that that's something that comes back, but in order to not make the perfect the enemy of the good, if we could move the ball downfield, it's just an idea and maybe we could hear from other folks.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Is there anyone from the office or from the union that would like to address the board? Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Julie Dake, D-A-K-E, Abel, A-B-E-L, and I am the union representative for the Assistant County Attorneys. I appreciate Mr. Loomis bringing this to, bringing this up because obviously the lack of being able to find Assistant County Attorneys is an issue. As a union and as the representative of the union, we certainly want to look at this. We would, on most of the issues, if not all of the issues or so to speak, we would need to look at doing a memorandum of understanding to the current contract because this cannot be just an approval by the board and done since we are in the middle of a contract. We are certainly willing to do that, to look at a memorandum of understanding. I'm kind of proceeding with an abundance of caution at the moment because typically in my twenty years, we don't do negotiations at a board meeting. So I'm just trying to be very careful of what I say or what I do, but I do really appreciate the county attorney bringing this up and the board willing to look at it. And I think there would only be a minor thing that we would need to work on for us to reach full agreement on, on the suggestions of the county attorney.
Julie, thank you for coming. Is it fair to say that if the board directed, you know, HR to, you know, to draft an MOU with some of this language that you'd be amenable to sitting down and looking at it and, and going over the terms and?
Normally, both sides agree and then we draft an MOU. That's always been my experience on how it's handled because it's both parties coming to the agreement, but like I said, I think that could happen fairly quick.
So on the, so on any of the substance today, is there anything you want to signal your position on?
Um, I would rather talk to the HR when we're completed about that.
Is there a particular proposal that stands out as being closer to the finish line or farther away?
I think we would need to have some discussion on the, what step new employees are brought into. The contract's currently at four and we're certainly willing to look at that, but we may not be in agreement with the county attorney right now. The other thing I would want to look at is the position of interns, just because those are paid positions. Right now, the county has, covers part-time employees, permanent part-time employees and full-time employees and I just want to make sure that we don't, that from a union standpoint, we don't need to do anything with that and how the internships are handled. That would just be a, something I'd probably call the Public Employment Relations Board about.
Technically, would the internship not even matter under the contract as an MOU because it's not really a union position?
That's what I want to clarify. That's just what I want to clarify.
Right. It's, it wouldn't be a union position. It'd just be a temporary part-time position, so it wouldn't even fall under the union therefore.
Well, under the union contract, that actually states there is a part that if there is a temporary position, that it could only be a hundred and twenty days. So if you're looking at a paid intern, how under labor law does the Public Employment Relations Board look at that? I would just want to make sure that both sides have their ducks in a row, so to speak.
Any objections on the vacation part, Julie?
No.
So would there be comfortability with items one and two, meaning the hundred and six thousand one seventy-seven sixty-six for FY twenty-three and twenty-four from ARPA funds, the increase by four percent, plus twenty-five thousand five hundred for ARPA for bonuses and one week of vacation? Then we can let the questions on the internship authorization, the new hire at step six be worked out further along? I mean, the boards can give the county attorney the budgetary?
I think as far as the budgetary position, if we're intending, if we would intend to use ARPA funds, then it would simply be a, a dentist's task of earmarking some remainder of our funds for that purpose. They're actually spent when, you know, the reports are filed, the expense reports, but, but the board could, could obligate without actually spending the money yet. We could obligate that amount for the county attorney's purpose and obviously they would not be spent unless there's an MOU that's confirmed.
That's, that's what I'd like to do in order to, I don't know what the rest of you think, but that way we can start to give our county attorney some of the tools that are needed to be able to hire at that rate and retain as well, which with a staff that seems like they're very undermanned would probably be hopefully appreciated in terms of being able to help.
I mean, I'd rather see an all or nothing approach myself because we're down thirty-three percent of the staff in the office and, I mean, we're leaving out the stuff that attracts the new ones, whether it be an internship, whether it be starting somebody at a, a level consumer with their experience.
I, I don't think we're leaving anything out. I think we're just talking about the sources of funds from ARPA.
Sure.
The other proposals we could budget, even if they're not obligated, so.
I guess my worry is if we say we're not going to have a week of vacation and we're not going to increase by four percent or have this bonus, I think it makes it harder for the county attorney to say to people out on the stump, so to speak, come here, we don't have any vacation and we may be four percent.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Well, you should have that and you should also, I think, be able to start where you should start.
I agree. I just, I don't want to hold that up, I guess is what I'm saying. If we can get three of the five knocked out today.
So we could, we could obligate ARPA funds, Dennis?
Yes.
We could do that. We could budget for an intern position which may not be filled and the vacation would completely be within the hands of, of the MOU. We're not, we can't necessarily budget for that cost. And of course, the steps would also be something that the county attorney is unaware of the precise cost. Sorry, did you have anything else?
No, you're fine. I was, I was just going to add that, excuse me because I don't mean to overstep my bounds at all, but, you know, any approval of the monetary stuff that you guys do today and hopefully then within a couple of days a week or whatever, we could knock out the MOU and then go with it.
Yeah.
So, because I think that's what I, what it sounds like to me, what you guys are trying to do.
Yeah, that would, that would be the hope.
Is to get things, get things moving.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you have anything else for us? Looks like we have a?
I do not.
Another interested speaker. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Julie.
Hey, Joshua Woodman. I'm one of the Assistant County Attorneys. Just to provide a little bit of history to this discussion, we have, the board has approved MOUs with a couple of the other unions previously and I think they followed a similar process to this where basically the agenda item tonight is the board saying, this is what we're willing to do. Obviously, the union has agreed to the MOU. It has to be formally drafted. It has to be, there was some back and forth there, but Melissa, as the HR director, without direction from the board, isn't really willing or able to craft the MOU. So even if there's an item that there may not be full agreement on, if the board is able to say, this is how far we're, we are willing to go, I think that the remaining issues could still be worked out. So I don't know if that helps or not as far as what's on the agenda tonight and what can be done, but.
I think that, that does help. So I, we're giving her the direction of the boundaries to work in and where it ends up is up to everybody else then. So that makes sense to me.
And I just want to say as somebody who's sitting in a chair doing the work, I mean, James laid it out two weeks ago, but we need help, we need bodies as soon as possible. And I think that everyone would agree that these steps, or whatever the board can do, whatever James can do to get people here soon, needs to happen and I'm all in favor of that.
So I'm going to make a motion and I'm going to number them my own way here because the numbers are confusing. So first item, paid intern trips up to ten thousand a year out of FY twenty-four then so, that would be number one. Then so that would be number one. Number two, the 4% ARPA retention. I'm, I'm, I'm moving that as well. Number three, start at the step levels. I'd say that's good. Number four, new hires, get the vacation, the one, one week right away. And number five, the $1,500 retention through ARPA. So I'll make a motion that those five things are.
Can we do them one at a time? So we're not moving all five?
I want to move them all five together.
So are we voting on all five together?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't think the step increase ones.
Well, we're giving them permission to negotiate with that or offer that. And if they choose to reject that part, that's up to them.
I don't, I think we just heard that our, our past practice was to discuss the terms, signal our agreement and direct the HR director to craft an MOU.
So if you're in favor of it, that's what we're voting on.
I think that's sufficient.
Okay, so it's for 4% for FY '23, '24. So that'd be 106,177.
ARPA funds.
66. 106,177,66 for 4% for '23, '24. And 25,500 for bonuses. One week of vacation. 10,500 for internship.
I just said 10,000.
Okay. And an MOU regarding the step increases, is that right?
Yep, step increases was item four, or three.
Would it be easier for the purposes of the minutes to say as proposed, the only difference we're looking at is $500 for the?
Well, we're, the other difference would be the deputy that we've already done.
That's all taken care of though in prior week, right?
Right.
Yeah, so that's not really on the table now?
Right. So I guess if that makes it easier on that end.
Yeah. So the motion is to craft an MOU, direct the HR director to craft an MOU per the recommendation. Is that, is that okay, Mr. Raddick?
Clear.
I'll second your motion. I think we should follow it up with the obligation of, of ARPA funds just so that's, you know, that dollar amount's clear as well. Any, any discussion on this item? I think the board signaled support for fixing or alleviating the issue. And, yes, you may speak again.
Can I have a clarification?
Yes.
When would, when would the 4% be looking at kicking in? The 4% increase?
I think it was presented in a fashion that would be as soon as possible.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Per calculation, based on February 10th to start it.
Okay.
And that could change based off when things are agreed upon, so.
But it sounds like they can get them together and get an MOU ironed out in a couple of days. The sooner the better.
And obviously, the board's preference is if, as Mr. Taylor said, there's a hangup, we move forward with what we can and the board will support that. Yes.
In order to make it effective on the 10th, we would need, in our payroll department, at the latest by next Wednesday, in order to program it so that on the 10th, they receive those funds. If we receive it after that and we have to do corrections, which is what we had to do with the other two groups, it, it sometimes, depending on how long it takes, it can take up to a month or longer just to do the corrections hitting each employee. There's fewer in the attorneys than some of the other departments, so it probably wouldn't take as much time, but it is a little more time consuming that way.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
So is the goal to try add this MOU on next week then?
The goal is as, as soon as the parties can get together and hash this out. Kenny?
I can sympathize with the county attorney and their office. I'm hiring and trying to retain people in some difficult times. What I would like the board to keep in mind is they've addressed several departments and several areas throughout the county. In other words, secondary road workers, the sheriff's office, now the county attorneys. I believe they talked to the, possibly the recorder's office at one time. But this might seem like an alienation to some of the ASME members. And I'm not sure how well that'll be received. Thank you.
Okay. Treasure Bertrand.
Yep. Sorry, good evening, Treasure Bertrand. My name's Tina Bertrand. I am the treasure. I, I just wanted to kind of really follow up with something that Kenny just said. We have tried to, we did bring a request back to the board, it kind of died after a while. I'm not sure if the, the union members that are part of the courthouse agreement are going to take kindly to some of this stuff because I think they're the last group that was left out. I don't know if it was because we weren't able to come to terms of agreement or if direction to draft an MOU was not given to.
I'll, I'll just answer that. We, we've never given any direction to draft an MOU. We are looking, you know, in the past practices, last year, we were looking at positions that were severely underpaid and in comparable markets and made adjustments there. And this year, we're looking at this just purely because it's a 33% vacancy in the office. I mean, that's, that's the clear answer as to what's going on by the board. And if somebody feels left out, I'm not here to make anyone feel better. So I'm sorry, but.
And I, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with you, Supervisor Raddick. One of the things and the challenge that we have in that group is the diversity of the employees. It is a challenge, even in the treasurer's department, to take a clerk two at the treasurer's office and say, "Are what we're doing there equal to a clerk two at the recorder, at the auditor's office, a position at building services?" I think it's a much more complicated issue. And I'm not trying to complain that it didn't move forward or didn't happen. What I really want to communicate is, is that I think we need to be better at communicating to some of the other staff and those, you know, some of those staff members, why it might be a bigger challenge to address it because we have so many different departments, so many different types of classifications. When you talk about the attorneys, you're talking about attorneys, right? They're all kind of the same group of people. When secondary roads comes in, it's the same type of scenario. They're pretty much the same type of classification. Maybe a little bit different within their group, but they're the same type, type of employees. When you talk about the courthouse, the ASME, and I always try to say it correctly, we're talking about a fairly wide diversity in terms of a position. A clerk two in the treasurer's office is not the same as a clerk two in the county attorney's admin staff. A legal secretary, which is a clerk three, how does that compare in terms of skill set and qualifications necessary to a clerk three in the treasurer's office? They are drastically different qualifications. And I think that that's one of the things that I can take away when we hear some of this stuff. Although staff may complain, it's about being able to communicate, not only as a department head to my own staff, but maybe a little, little bit from the board as well in terms of it's not just a one size fits all. So it's a difficult challenge, I think, for all of us, including the HR department, to be able to come up with, yes, everybody deserves a percent, a percent and a half, 2%, 4%, whatever that case may be. I'm not necessarily disagreeing with some of the approach. I'm just trying to state and communicate that communications and how we handle it and what's actually get back to the staff members, that there is, that, that we can at least acknowledge that we have a diversity in that group. That's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. It, it's true that there's, it's easy to address, you know, populations that are more similar at once. Mr. Sheriff?
Yes, Sheriff Sheehan. So just for clarification, only a part of the unions from the sheriff's office were awarded the 4%, which was the correctional officers. It was not the sworn deputy staff, which they're going through negotiations now with the board and with the, the legal representation of the board. But just for clarification, they were also not a part of, of that 4%. And then, I'm not really sure how to address the comment. I know that it's not any of our jobs to, I guess, worry about people's feelings or, or whatever, but there is, I think Tina probably said it better than I can say it, just to, some acknowledgement of the people that are throughout the county. If they feel left out, it's either the department heads or those individual elected officials who are left with the fallout of that lack of communication. And it does make our jobs more difficult at times. So just, you know, we make tough decisions every day and let people know, but when, when there's maybe better communication, it does make the job easier on our end. And just a reminder that, that they are the customer service representatives for the county. So an unhappy worker makes for, you know, potentially more, more problems, which again, than us department heads or, or I should say, us elected officials or department heads then have to deal with whatever, you know, personnel issues arise from that. So just would, would just simply ask to take that into consideration, so.
Sheriff Sheehan, let me ask, it's because you both said better communication. What does that look like? Define that to me. Describe that, because I don't like nebulous terms of better communication, so. Appreciate it so we know.
I guess just the, a more detailed addressing of what, why different departments were, or why different unions or different workers were taken care of with the 4% when others were not. Because I don't want to speak for anybody else, but the folks that were not taken care of felt less valued from the board. And so then again, we, you know, the, the challenges for us that are the, the go-between to make sure that, no, that's not the case. These are tough decisions that have to be made. And, but when callous statements are made, makes it a little harder to want to defend it, to be honest.
So does that look like emails, in-person meetings, letters? What would you say would be the best?
Any or all. Any or all of it.
Okay.
It's a fair question.
I think we're very clear on all the positions that were, where we've done something. I mean, obviously, jailers, we were down in positions. We need to hire, you know, about 15 positions there. We were looking at comparables. We were very clear as to why we gave increases there with ARPA. EMS and paramedic, we were down positions quite a bit, 25%. I believe of our shift coverage was down. And we filled and, and gave the increases there. And here in the attorney's office, down 33% of the staff. I think it's very clear why we're doing it when we're doing this. And everybody in the county has gotten a raise in the last year. Not everybody on the private sector gets one. You know, we follow the contracts where we need to and where we needed to make adjustments, we've done that. And I think we're being responsive and responsible. Now, if anyone just wants to point a finger and say, "Well, I got left out." Well, there's, if you want to go be a jailer, you want to transfer, become a paramedic, get that education, you want to get the education to become an attorney, we need those positions filled. Go ahead and, and by all means, get that. I mean, I don't think I'm being callous in my statements here as far as who we gave a raise and as to why.
Okay. So I'll just say one more thing. As I would teach in my communication courses, 93% of the receiver's perception of the message you're delivering comes from how you say it, not what you say.
So to talk detail, Supervisor Raddick, one of the things that the opportunity that this board had to communicate to the other departments is exactly that. What are the current raises? What are the current wages, the wage rate for a jailer? Right? That was discussed in open board meeting. So does anybody know what the current rate for clerk two or clerk three at the treasurer's office should be compared to a clerk three at the county attorney's office? Are they equal? So the perception is, is that we have a very forward-facing department. We deal with a lot of customers every day, all day. Some of those customers are not nice. Some of those customers are downright mean, okay? And the starting wage for that clerk is 1822 an hour. That's what County Attorney Loomis wants to actually start an internship at, okay? Now, I understand that an intern at an attorney's is an educated position, a college-educated. And a clerk two at the treasurer's department starts out with, all they have to have is a GED or high school diploma. So they're two different, they're, they can be two different things, right? But for 1822 an hour, the comments that are said in my office is that that's not enough money to get up and get out of bed for when they have to deal with the customers that they have to deal with, okay? Now, I may not agree with that statement wholeheartedly. There's lots of reasons why you get up in the morning, get up out of bed and go to work when you need to support your family, you need to put food on the table. But there are comments that come about when you have to be in your office every single day. And they talk to the other coworkers. And if you're, and if you're in another department that doesn't have to serve the community the way the treasurer's office does, can you work from home? We can't do that in our office. There are other positions within the community, within the county that can work, work from home. And yet, they don't need any more criteria, they don't need any more expertise than what we need in our office. We have sensitive information in our office as well that we deal with that sometimes gets overlooked. Again, I've actually had some tough conversations with, with the staff at the treasurer's department. I went out myself and did a survey based on other treasurers around, around the state, looked at some comparables to be able to communicate that to them. So I can't always say that I can agree with the complaints that are heard or that are said, but I do have to at least acknowledge the complaints, hear their complaints and do something else about it. It doesn't always make it easy for me. And I'm not asking for this board to make it easy for me. It's just about being able to understand as a community and as a county, these are the types of things that we deal with. And like it or not, people are going to feel left out. And those are going to be statements that you're going to hear. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more time, Kenny.
I'll be quick. The treasurer and the sheriff set it much more eloquently, eloquently than I could have. I just wanted to express to the board that that perception is out there. And I believe as the treasurer said that, I think it would be helpful if the board would take just a small amount of time to try to explain that to some of the, the people that are feeling that. And I'm, I'm not only talking about, about my departments, my department. I'm, I am talking about multiple or several departments that I've heard this perception from. Thank you.
I think we're all in the county dealing with the reality that there are several different bargaining units that each encompass, you know, classifications that latterly may seem like they should be together, but just by function of how things are set up in this county, that's not the case. And we're all dealing with that challenge. So appreciate the discussion from other offices on how, because this is a, this is a problem that, not a problem, this is an issue that has come up before and continues to come up kind of on a complaint-based scenario. And the reason for that, I think, is, is simply because the base case of the board is that we obviously don't have to do anything, but we're trying to do something. And so we obviously don't want, we want to be a net positive and certainly don't intend for any other groups to, to take it, you know. any other groups to take it, you know, the wrong way. With that said, I want to go back to the topic at hand and just say, you know, I appreciate the, we talked a lot about communication. I appreciate the communication brought forward by the county attorney on this issue going outside of his scope, I believe, and really advocating for the office functions and the bargaining unit under his supervision. So, I think the board has had a good conversation because of that, and I want to thank Mr. Loomis for bringing it out so transparently to the public. Is there any other discussion from the board on the item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five-zero. Also like to make a motion to obligate, would we say a hundred and thirty-five thousand total-ish?
Hundred and forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. I can round that up a little bit, because that mean we spend it all, or we don't spend?
I'll make a motion to obligate one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand out of ARPA funds for employee retention in the county attorney's office.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Are we certain, Dennis, from talking to the consultant, that is the fifteen-hundred-dollar sign-on?
That's retention.
That's considered retention, Ms. Taylor?
Four-point-one, three-point-one, and then the wage increases, other one.
Okay.
See, we conflated that number, though, with the internship, correct?
Yes.
So, we'll have to peel that off, because that can't be ARPA, right?
I, I'm going to check them off.
So, can we bifurcate the two, and you'll know that one amount goes to one and the ten thousand goes to another? Okay.
We have a total obligation of one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. You're marked. Okay. So, if you would supply the board with another ARPA update with just obligated funds and remaining funds, that'd be helpful. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five-zero. Thank you. Item eleven is reports on committee meetings. I'll let you go first, Mr. Nelson.
I have none.
Oh, okay.
I did have one. Workforce development, the eighteen counties, in the twenty-eight E agreement, we're all invited to discuss all the, you know, direction that we were looking to go. Of the eighteen counties, eleven were present. Traditionally, we are lucky to get half of them to actually be present for our meetings. Of those eleven, there were only about four or five that actually have served on the board before. A lot of people were turned over and replaced. And basically, after restructuring workforce development two times, three times in the last three years, it was unanimous with all the supervisors present that we would like to just all repeal our twenty-eight Es and let the state take over that. We're given very little local control with those workforce development dollars anyway. So, the state is required to spend the money if somebody were to be displaced in this area anyway, and we believe that the community colleges would work to get their share, get their funding through the state anyway. So, that is going to be something coming forward, and Rick Hunsacker had sent a draft for us to put on the agenda here in the coming weeks. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
None. Thank you.
Mr. Beddinger?
Yeah, I met with the ship committee board, and they're doing well. Just the only report is they're looking for people to serve on the Early Childhood Iowa Board, so if anybody wants to represent this part of the state, Des Moines, that's what they're looking for, potential board members. But other than that, they've got a lot of programs going. They're looking at a couple new grants, sizable grants that would really help with juvenile services here in the western side of the state, so other than that, that's good.
Thank you. I did have a meeting last week. I had a good sit-down meeting, probably hour and a half or so, with the county sheriff, Chad Sheehan, and also the chief deputy US marshal for the Northern District of Iowa from the US Marshal Service. I can't say, nor could I say, or give any commitments on behalf of the US government, but I can tell you discussions are ongoing and look very positive from my point of view. I know the federal government also had a chance to tour our facility, and that the process is going along as it should be. So, and I also learned a lot about how these contracts work. And just for the public's knowledge, a lot of the debate on the issue of contracts was on faulty premises, because I heard it directly from the person in charge that there's not really a contract with a set number of years at a set rate that is given to a county. There's simply a GSA that is eligible for renegotiation after three years, and the rate is amended. So, the contract itself is perpetual and is in effect with Woodbury County right now. And common sense would say that you're not going to adjust the rate when there's an existing jail, or there has not been ground broken on a new facility, or perhaps it's not even halfway done. So, I want to clear that up for the public, that a lot of the debating that was done was done with a faulty premise and ignorance of how these agreements actually are enforced. So, I have every confidence that the board will be pleased with the outcome, and public service will be served, well-served, certainly within the next year. That's all I have that I can remember at this moment. So, move on to citizen concerns.
Is that with budget or any concerns?
Any concerns not noted on the agenda. If you have something on a budget item, we can, okay.
Citizen concern.
Sure. Name and address, please.
My name's Gerald King. I live at eleven-twelve Thirteenth Street, Sioux City, Iowa, five-eleven-oh-five. I appreciate the work that you men do. I know it's strenuous, not easy. Your department heads, I know you guys are going through some times. I came down here today to deliver you folks these papers. I don't know who all's on the board. You guys can pass them around if you choose to. I don't know if you care to discuss this now, or if you'd like to get back to me in thirty days. I have some conflicts going on with, for the past sixteen years, that the city has seemed to relinquished, and the state has seemed to relinquished, but the board or the county has not. And it's my intention to help the board and try and get the record straightened out.
Well, let us review this, and we can consult with who we need to and get back to you.
You have my address. You can let me know within thirty days, or I'll proceed from there.
Okay.
Thank you very much, man. Good job, you.
Thank you. Should this be received into the record, Pat?
You can do a motion.
Okay.
It hasn't been discussed.
All right. Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none. Item thirteen, any board concerns? Next week, we'll be starting at three-thirty, since that's our commitment to Neapolitan Labs to present electronically and walk through the new county website. I sent out a generic press release this morning. I think it's, the board's going to be happy with the user improvements, and the board office will transition to the new process on notifying people on the list in early March. We're going to kind of reset our subscriber base and allow people to organically opt-in to these communications and pick which items they want to be notified of from the county. So, I think it's good. It's a vast improvement. Any other board concerns? All right. Moving back into our budget review discussion, item fourteen. First item I have here is, before we move into other improvement requests, I wanted to take action on the carryover balance in the county attorney's funds of four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty dollars in FY twenty-three. It's unfortunate we have all these vacancies, but the reality is they're not going to be filled tomorrow, and even if they were, not all of these will be spent. And I adjusted it down from three-hundred thousand as my recommendation and in abundance of caution. However, after listening to where these, the funding sources would come from, ARPA mostly, I don't think that there's any, there's the same encumbrance upon these funds that could happen in FY twenty-three before July one. So, we obviously are not going to short-change this fund balance in case there is a a bunch of qualified applicants that start next week. But even given that, I think if we were to reduce cash reserves by, instead of two-hundred noted here, and I apologize, the item is to reduce cash reserves by, I will say, three-hundred thousand in the general basic fund. This is a partial balance of the county attorney's carryover of four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty dollars. The reason for this is just so we can mentally bookmark that we have not, at this point, still tapped into general fund reserves, beyond programmed uses and what we've already planned for last budget year. And this, I believe, is, would leave, you know, certainly over a hundred thousand dollars in case there is encumbrances upon it this year.
So, move.
Thank you. I'll second the motion by Taylor to reduce cash reserves by three-hundred thousand in the general basic fund.
Three or two?
Three-hundred thousand.
Can I just ask one question? What's our number right now, Dennis, on cash reserves and approximate percentage?
Right now, our number's about seven-point-seven million. That's excluding the two-point-five, or about twenty-three percent, or twenty-six percent reserve.
What do you mean excluding the two-point-five?
The two-point-five you have on the date of next year.
Oh, okay.
That's county farm. So, that's totally seven-point-eight-eight million, twenty-six-point-five-five percent reserve.
After everything we're doing, including tonight's motion?
Correct, because this whole share will not affect it. You can say you didn't spend a hundred thousand down three of our cash reserves in the end of the year. This is using reserves that are already in the budget, not going to be spent.
Twenty-six-point-five-five?
That's how our reserve is.
I thought you said twenty-six-six-five.
Twenty-six-six-five.
Yeah, that's where we're at. And even though technically where we're drawing this out of reserves, the carryover will go into reserves, and that's where we're drawing it from. We can't, you know, we're not reallocating county attorney, department money, right? You know, so that's the process.
And my second question is, is this a before or after picture? When you said earlier that we had approximately, whatever it was that you said we had to still cut, did you include, right, did you include this number or not include the number yet? So, this is new, not savings, but?
We already spent about a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand for what?
Yeah.
To add on, so it's kind of counterbalance out, but we'll come out positive on that proposition.
Thank you.
And I've spoken about this with Attorney Loomis and his understanding of what's going on. Any other discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five-zero. Item B is discussion action on use of local assistance and tribal consistency fund revenues. This is kind of a unique thing Dennis will explain, but he's matched it up with exactly one-hundred thousand dollars of expenses, so this will improve our budget picture by a further hundred thousand.
Yes, this hundred thousand, new money that's coming in above beyond ARPA, it's from the local system tribal consistency fund. This money here is from the amount of one-hundred thousand, Woodbury County. It can be spent for anything. There's no strings attached to it. So, what we've done, try to buy things or pay for things for one-time shots. Treasurer's office has motor vehicle and also tax department with a timely, I think, virtual. Lobby, we had money for it. For that, here are expense scanners, various things like that.
We have some one-time expenses for scanners.
Those we'll use, we'll use this money for. Also, the auditor have like a thousand-dollar scanner, we'll use that. And then the balance, we'll use that in the new LEC building where they do cabinets, build certain cabinets. They're going to get a truck for fifty thousand, the other stuff is about twenty-six-four. We have this tool, things they need equipped to get started out there, their one-time basic, one-time shots. Obviously, we replace tools once a while. There'll be other things, but this is just to get this money spent. What it'll do, it saves a hundred thousand tax dollars in general basic fund. And this is not a band-aid, this is just paid for, it's one-time.
Good. I'll move approval of the use of a hundred thousand dollars of LATCF funds as proposed. Second, by Nelson.
So, Dennis, does that improve our budget picture then with the gap that we're, or is that on new, only on new expenses that?
It will improve our. So, actually, between last two months, we paid four-hundred thousand.
Although, if you're throwing it just randomly in the budget, you're not necessarily covering one-time expenses.
Yeah, we are. I got itemized what the one-time expenses are.
Yeah, it's broken out.
Between the three offices, treasurer, auditor, building service.
It's kind of like the use of gaming funds for equipment. He's just mashed it up to one-time costs.
Gaming funds, a little bit different, because those are annual costs that we're doing. Their annual costs.
Their annual costs that we're doing, where you supplement it, because a lot of things we're using are costs that are reoccurring with anticipation that we'll have a tax growth next year for twenty-four, twenty-five, and federal prisoners will come in to offset the debt service levy, which frees up money to cover all these other things we're using somewhat band-ager fillers until we get more money coming in. So, it won't increase tax to your side.
Sorry, what is our balance on gaming right now?
I had, that I thought in the sheet there, I think gaming's right around five-hundred thousand unallocated. Between gaming and local option, we got about a million dollars left that potentially we could do something with.
Thank you.
Motion. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five-zero. Could we do a little inventory here, Dennis, before we move into improvement requests? So, we started, you said, with a deficit of one-hundred-and-forty-thousand-nine-forty-two?
Yep. Then we had to add.
And then, let me go through this and verify with you. And then we added fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-two net.
Six, yeah, net.
Yes, yes, we're going to, we're going to make that change. It's going to happen. And then we added sixty-six-thousand-five-hundred for an improvement request for WCICC. And then, does the CIP impact this current year?
The one that we're reviewing today for next year or our current?
The generator.
That'll be four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand plus five percent interest. I can fear that'll be around eighty-five, ninety thousand. We'll save in debt service over the next, each year.
Okay, so we're saving about eighty-five thousand?
Yeah. I can come up with the exact number for you.
So, if we take what we've added up and we subtract eighty-five thousand, we're at a, at this point, we're at a deficit of one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-four. And then, the last two actions were to increase our, as you would say, to the good, by four-hundred thousand. So, now we are at a net reduction at the current tax rate of two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-and-six dollars, assuming it's exactly eighty-five thousand for the generator.
Eighty-five thousand, that would go from the debt levy, though, not like general basic.
Well, the debt service will decrease their levy. We're using that decrease to keep the levy the same, and the debt service, it'll go down. So, when you balance the debt service down and the others up, it'll all balance out the same tax rate. That's our goal.
Yep, it'll impact the countywide rate.
Yes, it will.
To worse.
And the board still needs to consider some key items. One is the One is the current negotiated contract with the patrol deputies. And another is if there's any additional, other than programmed in, wage plan increases and also elected official raises per the comp board, which is meeting in three minutes, right?
Right.
Uh, Mr. Gill, will that be, can that be recorded?
It can if I run up there right now.
Yeah, it probably should be.
Do you want me to go start it, or do you want me to sit there?
No, go ahead.
Thank you.
No.
Chair.
Yes.
Okay, when we do get the comp board recommendations, I'm going to plug those in, because that's the upper limit.
Yes, that's what that's what I was referring to. That is going to decrease this number until the board takes formal action. So at this point, there's a few things outstanding. We're we're coming into some improvement requests with a with a reduction in the rate of two hundred and twenty-six thousand.
And I have another thirty thousand in the overall budget review, which is refunds. We did not budget money for refunds where we receive the money, we have to refund it. We budgeted thirty, so I need to put thirty thousand in as revenue, which will be a plus for us.
Okay. So with a couple of actions, we're planning to take two hundred and fifty-six thousand. All right, thank you. Uh, item C, consideration of improvement requests.
Okay, you go back to where it is in proven requests there. I think I gave, I believe I gave you the summary sheets in the board packet, which looks like, I have scribbling on mine, but it looks like this here. And I list them in order the way they are in the book, so we can probably go right through them. Like Mersey's, Veterans Affairs is the first one, it's the first one in your budget book on page one. So we can go through each one of these and quick, we've already done. So I guess the first one to consider is Veterans Affairs. And Melissa can help me on some of these, because they have been in conversation, I believe, with Veterans Affairs. And this is getting individual, I think, certified out there. So they want to change that clerk two to a C V S O clerk three pay scale.
I, in the past, there were, there was two veteran service officers, including the director. And now there is only one, including direct directors. So I do believe the director of Veterans Affairs is asking for her clerk to become certified as a Veterans Affairs officer and then also be on the same pay scale.
Do you think this is merited, supported, what you're?
I do think it's.
Is there any issue? You know, it seems like, this isn't a complaint, but it seems like every, each time we try to do one thing to the good, we find out a second and third order effect is, well, what about this person and that person, and why are you doing this? And we
I understand.
exponentially find out eight or twelve more problems from each good thing we try to do.
I understand, and I I do believe that the schooling or online instruction is this spring for her to become a certified veteran service officer. So that would be completed as of July first, when this would go into effect. So I think it possibly could be contingent that she does get that certification. I don't know if that, how that would be worded, or how that would be addressed, I guess.
And there's no problem as far as the union or any?
Well, I believe it's up to the director to, you know, staff her office as she sees fit. It would not be a union position any longer. So that is their position, as I know it, I can't give you any other details besides that, so.
I wouldn't mind hearing them all before we approve them. Instead of going through each one up or down.
Okay, yeah, there's several, so is the board okay with that? Circling back and giving approvals or or not? Okay, is there any questions on this one? All right, Dennis, what's the next?
Okay, the next one is conservation, and then this one, they want to increase the hours of the part-time, but this will be covered by decrease in part-time help, eight thousand, eight thirty-one, so it has a negative impact on the budget.
I thought we were going to move that to, I thought we were moving that out of that, we're going to do that as a general meaning for this one.
Well, they can do it either way, they go ahead and prove it.
I didn't bring that, I didn't bring the information. What we want to do is, we've got a part-time clerk position that's been budgeted at sixteen, sorry, Dan Heisel Conservation, at sixteen hours a week. We struggled filling and keeping that position full at those sixteen hours. We wanted to move that to twenty-four hours to try and get somebody that's a little more meat to the position. And so we wanted to move to twenty-four hours. We've got some seasonal positions that we call seasonal ranger position that depending on college, when they start college and when they start the job or when they go back to college, we have funds left over. It just, you can't decrease it, because if they're there for the full amount, you don't have the money. But we were proposing to decrease that position by point three-three. We consider it a point-two increase for the clerk position. We would reduce it by point three-three on the seasonal ranger position, and it's a wash. We're we're just shifting the money from that position over to the clerk position. So we're not going in, it's not impact on the budget. It's the same dollars are in my budget, we're just moving it within the budget to cover the clerk position. We're confident that we can continue on with our seasonal positions for the Rangers during the summer and not have any issues with that. So that's our request is, it's a wash. I was going to, I, Dennis and I must have had a misunderstanding. I was going to put this on the agenda and not do it within the budget, because it really doesn't affect our our budget. It's just an internal shifting of funds, and but we needed your permission to do it. So if you want to do it now, that's great. If not, I'll come back and see you in a week. It's just a wash, we're moving funds from this fund.
In our book in pages two through four, is this something separate, or is this?
No, this is all better than that. That is on page three where he talks about the point four.
So page two is something separate from what we're talking about right now?
Yes, page four is where he talks about point four. And that's just the shift of deleting this part-time and increasing this one over here. So it's, there's no increase in taxes at all for that, the one we're talking about right now.
And I actually, after Dennis and I spoke, redid those figures and worked with Michelle and and my office manager. And it is a point three-three reduction on the seasonal ranger position to increase that clerk position by the point-two, which was the eight hours a week, so.
And there's no, there's no budget impact?
Right, no impact. Okay, deleting part-time, reducing that, increasing the other part-time. And it's just a wash of money. But I want to show how much money it's shifting around.
So technically, it's not an improvement request? So what's page two?
He's increasing hours in one position, that's an improvement request. But he's going to fund it by decreasing hours in another, so. And it could be just to a P A form, too.
I would move the authorization of the request.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Any other?
Oh, the other one he adds is new position.
No, we're we're gonna, are we gonna vote on this first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you made a motion on it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero.
All right, thank you. I figured it would be easy, just, we're just moving funds, so.
The next one's a resource tech position, that's a new position, I think. He needs it, he says he, well, he justified why he needs it, but comes back every year, so.
Yeah, this is, this is a, can I go, are you done, Dennis?
Yep.
I didn't want to interrupt. This position has been put in front of you before Dan. I always say B D, it was when Rick Schneider was here. Uh, it's a technician position. We have our, you know, the county has broken up into three districts for conservation. We've got the Brownslake Snyder Bend District, we've got Southwood, and we got Little Sioux. Brownslake Snyder and Little Sioux have a technician. They've got a resource manager, an assistant resource manager, and a technician. Those are our three full-time employees in each each park district. I don't know why, but in Southwood, they have never funded or put forth a technician position. And it is the biggest district we have, the most amount of acres that are managed. Four hundred, four thousand, five hundred and twenty-two acres managed of now six thousand that we own and manage. And they do it with two full-time employees. Right now, Eric's doing it himself, because the, our assistant resource is down at the law enforcement academy for the next fourteen weeks. This is just a position that, for management and getting the job done, is tough. And that's why you're seeing it every year. It is a position that we need, and Eric is overworked. And they don't complain a lot, but we do hear it. And I was asked today in our staff meeting if this was going to come forth as an improvement request. And I said, yes, it was. So, so here I am again with this position in front of you, and it is for our Southwood position, uh, district. And did you, you got the figures I gave you?
And the numbers have been verified by Michelle.
How many years has this position been vacant, or needed, even better said?
I know, I've been here, this will be going on my fifth year. And I've asked for it for five, and I know Rick has asked for it. I could go back, but Dennis is smiling, it's been on the books. They've been, we've been asking for it time after time. And just hoping some year that it's going to happen, because it would really help us out, so.
And this was for a technician?
A technician position, correct.
And their responsibilities are?
Their responsibilities are to, a lot of the general maintenance, the mowing, cleaning, the cabins we have that that are rented, they they check the cabins in and out. They they clean, make sure that there's no issues when those are vacated and get ready for the next, the next renter to come in. So like at Brownslake Snyder Bend, they have that technician that does that. But right now, it's Eric or his assistant resource. And now it's, and they're on call on weekends. And and one thing I want to point out, all of my employees must have a four-year degree, a college degree. And that's pretty much statewide for conservation. You must have a four-year degree. Then on top of that, we require them to have a law enforcement, not in the technician position, but the rest of them have a law enforcement degree they have to go to the academy and get. They have to have a pesticide applicator's license. It goes on and on, they have to have the water treatment license for grade one. So there's a lot of responsibilities that they, you know, it's just, I just can't hire somebody off the street. So the technician position has to have an education, but we're not requiring law enforcement. But they still have to have the pesticide and and first responder and some of those other things that in the parks are important if we have an issue, so. You know, a couple of years ago, I worked with you and eliminated one of our requests that they'd been working on as a G I S person that had been in front of you for several years. And I took my natural resource, natural aesthetic nature center and morphed two jobs into one, and it saved the county, I think at that time it was ninety thousand dollars, by being creative with that position. If I could do that, I would do that here, but I can't. This is a position we need and that would help us our our guys out in the field greatly. Excuse me.
Do you foresee any difficulty in staffing the the renewed position?
Pardon?
Is that you foresee any difficulty in staffing it?
Getting, no, I think we would, we've had seasonals that work for us that are in college for this position that have, are looking for jobs. In fact, our last hire at, that filled the technician position at Little Sioux Park had worked for us for two or three years. And he came back and interviewed, and we told him what he needed to do to improve. And he came back and he's he's one of our good employees now. And it was a seasonal that we had hired before.
Dennis, what is our status on local option sales tax fund balance?
Uh, we have about four hundred and fifty thousand available.
Dan, this is a resource technician that will help to manage cabins and grounds and otherwise, and has an economic development impact, would you say that that's correct?
Yes, it's a huge economic development impact for what our parks do. I could sit here and just go through all those figures for you again, and you've heard them before. But the impact that, and it's hard to wrap your hands around it when you don't see it. But just the land is four hundred dollars an acre the hunters bring in. You look at when they travel into town and they rent those cabins, they stop and buy fuel, they go buy food. And we've got to take care of all that. They go out hiking, they go bird watching, they go deer hunting, they go pheasant hunting.
So you think with veracity, one could say that if this position was authorized, it'd have an impact to be able to maybe bring in more people by having better maintain grounds and cabins and things of that nature, potentially?
It'll help us maintain the grounds and do a better job, and how we want to spin it from there. I don't, I, you'd understand that side of it more than I do, but it's going to help us
I would.
Improve, improve our conservation efforts in the county, which will improve the economic development by bringing people to our county.
I would look to see if we could use local option sales tax, if we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and this.
Five hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Five hundred and sixty-three thousand? I, I would move authorization of it in that amount for local option sales tax.
Just to work caution, this should probably be reviewed each year to see where we are with our tax rate the following year, because this will be a program that's going to be there forever. So you could fund it with local option first year, then twenty-four, twenty-five, determine where we're at with taxes, everything else.
The local option sales tax, we we have a pretty sizable or healthy balance each year, correct? And we don't always know the good source of funds, because otherwise, the alternative is to go to property tax, which is the reason I think you see silence on the board, because we want, we have this push-pull. And I'll just speak for myself, where we don't really want to authorize more positions that are going to go on to property tax rules. But if we can use local option sales tax, and to you, it probably doesn't matter where it's coming from, as long as you got the position, is that?
Correct, I I'm a taxpayer, and and I I appreciate what you guys do, and and I realize that's tough every year. And for certain things, like the jail and the betterment of the county, as a taxpayer, if I've got to pay a little bit more, someday I will, and I won't complain about it. But that's just me, but I do appreciate what you guys are doing and trying to do. But yeah, if it can come from another fund that is there year after year to fund that position, I just don't want to be able to say, oh, sorry, when they have any local option sales tax, you're out of a job. I don't know.
But typically, each year, what I'm assuring you of is each year, we've got a sizable fund balance, where it's not like, oh, people stopped paying that tax, or we, or we've expended it altogether. So we've done that with soil conservation.
Okay.
Where we fund it each year.
I'll second the motion. And I'd point out that at this current moment, unless the board reconsideres their actions, we are no longer obligating lost funds for the economic development director position, which is a full-time, was a full-time obligation. So unless, for instance, a new supervisor wanted to re re-up the issue or something like that, that's the current direction of the board. So as far as funds not being available, I really don't see that, how that'd be the case, since we've been obligating those funds to a position, you know, for years. And then just a procedural question, who audits the county's selections on local option sales tax for economic development?
Uh, our auditors.
The Williams and Company? And they would tell us if they saw something that was outside the bounds?
No, they, they don't actually go item by item, they'll spot check. They'll see if something stands out and go back and question if they're anything, but we've never been questioned on local option.
But that's our check is, is the third-party auditor?
Right.
Okay.
And trust me, we get requests stacked that thick every year that we have to give to them, so they're very thorough with their job. That's just my department.
Okay, so Dennis, you get, um, details on, on stuff like this?
Yes.
Okay. So this would be an approval of this using local option sales tax and the other further discussion?
So of all the eight improvement requests on here, this is be like my bottom of the priority list, and the last one I would vote for, I'll be voting no.
Thank goodness for local option sales tax.
I guess I would agree with Jeremy that I think there's economic development potential here. I know that the, uh, the ongoing drought has hurt conservation parks like Little Sioux and Brownslake, just with the swimming ponds and things closed. People haven't been as anxious to go and camp and stay there, but I think that as soon as that weather breaks, people are going to be itching to get back to those parks. And I think nationwide, you see a trend of people wanting to get back out in nature. You're seeing record attendance at national parks and state, big state parks all across the country. I think the local option sales tax would be the best use of that, um, but I'd, I'd be supportive.
And COVID did see our, our numbers went way up, uh, and you're right, and if I could comment on the Little Sioux and Brownslake, our camping receipts were down seventy thousand, seventy-eight thousand dollars this past season because the beaches were closed, the lake was closed, but I am happy to tell you Brownslake is that, um, it came up three feet with the new pumping system they've put in. It's at a normal level where there will be boating and swimming and the beach will be open with the new concession stand, so hopefully we'll get those revenues back coming and, and help out, so. Economic development.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
No.
Passes four-one, radically opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate it, thank you.
Next, uh, Treasurer, correct?
Correct. Uh, she is up at comp board meeting, but you see what her requests are, moving the anthon clerk position from clerk two to senior clerk.
Her clone is right here with us, so.
I'm right behind you. No.
Good, I'm glad you're here.
I want to be upstairs. This was more important. Good evening again, uh, Tina Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. So this time I'm going to come to the board with a different approach on the, uh, wages at the Treasurer's Department. So after, you know, I kind of talked a little bit earlier tonight about some of the feedback that we got, I did mention that I went back through and did some analysis, um, within my office, not just on the wages as my, as staff wanted us to take a look at, but also over the last year and a half, um, I was able to actually take a look at how we're actually operating. And there were a couple of items that were, that came out that were very, very apparent. Of the improvement requests that we have, I have grouped them into three different items. One of them is to change the anthon office, the clerk that is, um, identified, she ba, she's basically out there full-time. She does come into the office, the main office, um, twice a month just so that we can keep her up to speed on what, what's actually going on, but she works relatively independent, um, of herself. Um, she also has to handle all three departments, which is the, basically what we have for the main departments would be the motor vehicle services, taxes, and DNR. And the one thing that I do want to just reiterate, um, for the two board members that may not be aware of this, the other three might already know about this, Woodbury County is the only Treasurer's Office that actually offers DNR services. Um, so it is something that she does need to be up to speed on, does handle the hunting and fishing licensing along with the, um, registrations for boats, ATVs, and things like that. So with the amount of independent work that she does, I believe that just being a clerk two, which is our bottom pay scale, um, warrants to have a high, you know, because she does have more responsibility. Uh, the other item that I had in there for, so I, the request is to move her from a clerk two to a senior level clerk. We would eliminate the clerk two position because we are not, that the request is not to add staff, it's basically just to move staff positions, um, based on their responsibilities. The other, um, clerk two shift to a senior level clerk, believe there's four of them. Again, this also has to come into the fact that they, these clerks actually work in the DNR department at the main office here in Sioux City. One of the clerks, um, we do, basically what we do is, um, we have one DNR clerk right now, we have one senior level position in the office, and that person does do DNR on a regular basis, but when they're not there, the past practice was to just close a DNR office. If he goes to lunch, goes on break, we just don't service those community, those members. So we've had a focus on training staff so that they can provide those services as well. So those are a level of staff members in the office that actually have to be knowledgeable in all three departments, whereas a clerk two would only have to worry about the taxes and the motor vehicle side of it. Um, the other position that, request that we have is to go from a clerk two to a clerk three position. Again, all of these are eliminating the clerk two positions, and the reason for that is we have two clerk twos in the office, and they are responsible for doing the daily repo, the deposits that we have to do, the reconciliation of all of the receipts for the respective departments, in addition to handling other cash, uh, management issues that we have in the office. They are also the two most senior level people in the office in terms of the, the union. When they ask for a request, they both want to have those holidays off at the same time, and it makes it challenging if we're going to allow them to be off at the same time and not have the adequate backup for their positions. There are some other things, uh, the, the county just, um, as we launched today, our new website, um, technology in the Treasurer's Department, um, is still back in the nineteen nineties, and so there are some opportunity to be able to utilize some resources and giving some responsibility to other staff members, um, on a regular basis that can focus on some of the innovation that we have with our technology and, um, focus a lot more on training. Um, training is another area in our office that we really need to focus on to make sure that everybody's up to speed with all the changes that we have in code. Again, just some of the technology that we have available to us and things like that. So the request would be to have, uh, to provide a diff, a higher level of support, um, at that level. Any questions?
Any questions?
I just have a question for Melissa, if that's okay. So Melissa, have you reviewed the, the changes in the, from the clerk positions and what, um, you deem fits the roles and responsibilities as well, or is that sort of outside of?
I actually passed them on or forwarded them to the union-
Okay.
-and had them look at, um, at the difference in the responsibilities in, in the Treasurer's Office, and they agreed with the plan, um, but they wanted to make sure that these hires would come within, like maybe two going to the three would be somebody from within and not somebody from the outside coming in to take the clerk three position if this is approved. So does that make sense?
It, it does.
Yeah.
Okay.
So for example, with the anthon clerk position, would that, would that involve a transfer of the same person?
I believe that's the same person, and since that person does do the other duties, that the senior clerk does in your office, correct? Then that would make sense that her responsibilities would be at a higher, higher pay grade.
And, and do you concur, if it's okay to ask, just, you know, uh, another, another voice, that each one of these merits a, a change in the position? So for example, from the clerk two to a senior clerk, where you look at them and say, that's not a clerk two, that should really be a senior clerk? I mean, and, and I respect absolutely your, your opinion on that, I just want to see from another perspective because I know I don't personally deal every day with the, the different classifications and, and knowing.
I do, um, I do believe if one of the employees does do the responsibilities or have the responsibilities of the position that is higher than them, then that's the, the pay they should be, they should be at, and I, I think these, um, transfers or promotions, you might want to call them, I think, uh, I do agree with Tina's proposal on these positions.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, go right ahead.
Just to offer a, a little bit more detail to the, the, uh, conversation, um, having had some of the conversations with Michelle, the intent is, is to really provide a promotion to the staff, the current staff there. They're already trained to do some of these things, um, so to go outside the office would not make a lot of sense because we'd have to retrain somebody. The senior level position, particularly with the anthon office, we have to have somebody else go out to anthon when she's sick, on vacation, or on the days that she comes back, back into the Sioux City office to be able to, um, you know, just be able to keep up on some of the changes and the items that we have going on in the department. This allows us to have four other staff members that can actually adequately support our anthon office, and the goal on the clerk three positions is to provide that, that extra support to the two that we have, but to also look at some of the other opportunities that we have in the department that we're not able to assign those tasks because they're, they're higher level tasks. I mean, just to keep up the maintenance on our websites and do, doing some of those kind of things takes a level of technology that a lot in our department don't have. There are a few that have and would love to be able to do it, um, but they don't see that as clerk two responsibilities. So it's really trying to balance some of that, where we need to offer the additional support, um, at the higher level positions, and what else we can use to, to advance the department, um, in a meaningful way.
May I?
Yes, certainly.
Pat Gill, Woodbury County Auditor. I've talked about this before, and I apologize, I'm, I haven't seen what's taken place here, but after all the comments and everything that I've heard from people here tonight, is I'm wondering where the collective bargaining process is, because every time this happens, and we've talked about this before, the sheriff's office comes in, Treasurer's Office, and all those come in, and then, and the same thing, building services, and what you're going to hear is now, I'm going to hear it in my office, and they're going to start talking about how important their positions are and how come they're being left behind. And I think the, the proper way to go would be through the collective bargaining process is that, uh, when you start looking at those, we did, uh, a hundred years ago, when I first started, the, uh, we brought in a consultant to, uh, to look at all those jobs, and I think maybe it's time to do that again or something because this is just out of control. Thank you.
So would it be fair, can I ask you from where you're at, either way, would it be fair to say that the actions that we do tonight, as well-intended as they may be, will have a second and third order effect in every elected official's office, potentially, with other people saying, whoa, wait a second, this clerk two went to a senior, I'm doing this or that, is that?
I think, uh, that's apparent after everything that you've heard tonight already so far. It's unintended consequences, and it's brought on by the economic, uh, position that we're in now, that the, the country is in, the inflationary, uh, pressures that people are feeling, and, uh, what took place last year and what is, uh, continuing to take place. Just asking you to be aware of that.
One thing I am going to respectfully disagree a little bit with Otter Gill. The collective bargaining unit set the pay scales, the classifications of what's allowed in their units. They don't necessarily name the number of positions within the department. As the department head is the one responsible for the department, it should be, it should fall to me and my responsibility in terms of what's the best operation in our department. I don't believe the collective bargaining said, hey Treasurer Bertrand, you can only have two clerk threes in your office, you can only have one senior clerk in your office, and the rest have to be clerk twos. It's about the job responsibilities and the essential responsibilities that they perform. So as an appointee, I would, had the benefit of looking at the last year and a half of operations within the department to see what is actually needed to meet the needs of the department. So I'm, I, it, it isn't always about, it's unfair for me because I'm part of a group who didn't get a raise at four percent or two percent or whatever it is. Okay, we had this discussion a little earlier this evening. My perspective is, I had that tough conversation with the department and, and the staff in my department, I did a review of wages to see where we stood in terms of each level of position. I also took at the next level and said, this is what this department needs to operate effectively. And the, so the approach is, is to ask for the improvement request based on job description, not based on the fact that somebody's been here for twenty years or five years or fifteen years. These are the roles and responsibilities and the essential services or the essential duties that they need to perform in those positions. So that's all I wanted to add to that.
Sorry, we're going to get into a debate here, but, uh, Melissa, uh, could you answer, in collective bargaining, when we start to, um, moving folks around, uh, I think, uh, first, uh, Treasurer, you're reclassifying some of these people that, as far as their job duties, is that what you're doing for, okay?
Yes.
And what is, uh, when you bargain a contract-
Mm-hmm.
-aren't those duties, from the beginning, aren't those duties considered in that contract where people fall in those classifications?
I would say that's fair to say.
Pardon?
I would say that is correct, that's how we came up with the grades and the classifications so many years ago, you know, when the contract was first written and, and the steps and everything were created, so I would, I would say that's fair to say at that time, not to say that those responsibilities and everything have not changed on the way.
Correct, I agree with that.
And any of the negotiations I've been in, as far as bargaining, we've not talked about job descriptions, responsibilities, duties as part of the bargaining practice.
But that, I mean, that's not in the contract. Usually when you're doing negotiations, you're just talking about wages, right? Most of the time.
Well, most of the time, yeah.
But, uh, so when do classifications take place? Is it appropriate to do it this way?
Well, I have addressed the union and I've talked to them, and they didn't, they did not, uh, disagree or have any think, or argument to say that we shouldn't be doing this. I guess that's my best answer. You know, when I, when I addressed them and I sent the proposal to them, they did not disagree or say they should, it should be bargaining, so.
So there's nothing in, there's nothing in the contract legally that says you have to go to collective bargaining, just, I'm just ignorant of just, so all, the overall, scope the depth of it?
And I, well, right now only wages are, we only have to bargain wages, so, but that is bargained by steps and grades and positions, so.
But I'm not adding or requesting a new position.
Right, right.
You know, the perspective would be if that's the case and we have one senior level-
Right.
-clerk in the department, if that clerk is identified to, the only reason that clerk's a senior level in my office is because they offer DNR services.
Right.
Well, I've got five people who are offering DNR services, so why, why would we be, why would we not be able to make that change within our department? The same thing with the clerk threes. I have two, two employees who are clerk threes right now. If they're not there and, and both of them are out, their essential services for that day has to be done by somebody else, and so who gets to do that? None of the other, you know, lower staff levels, they want, they don't want to come up and, and take those responsibilities, even for a day at this point in time, you know, and it's an essential service. So part of what I end up looking at doing is to be able to adequately support those two positions, looking at what are, what other items and essential services for that level positions, okay, and identify that need within the department, and I believe that that is the department head's responsibility, is for me to be able, as the treasurer, as a department head, for me to make that identification to say, yeah, we actually have a need in our department- for me to make that identification to say, yeah, we actually have a need in our department based on job descriptions, essential services, that fit within the bargaining union contract that says we, we can actually have staff members, additional staff members at a clerk three position.
If I may. I hope that everybody feels that this is a respectful discussion. And so I would like Michelle to come in because I hear in my department the differences in the positions of clerks and what they, what they're doing and where they should be. So I jokingly said at one point, there aren't going to be any clerk, what is the lowest level, except in our apartment, in our department at some point, is that when you continue to move these around. Michelle, would you?
Yeah, we've seen this throughout the years. There's been several departments who have promoted clerk two to clerk three. And if, I know you're not familiar maybe with the contract being new and, you know, there's a lot of different things involved. So the, the levels go and maybe they've described this clerk two is the lower paid than senior clerk is next, and clerk three is actually the highest paid position. So senior clerk, you would think maybe the highest, but it's not. That's kind of in between two and three. So your three would be the highest paid. And, you know, it's, it's filtered through different departments where one individual who is a clerk two turns into a clerk three where there's no staff underneath that individual. Then another department hears about it, then they come to the board and they get moved to a clerk three. It's been through our office and it, it, it does, people talk and yeah, pretty soon we won't have any clerk twos anymore because they will all be senior or clerk threes. But, you know, I understand the hierarchy and the chain of commands and, you know, you need to have people who are going to be able to do those more administrative duties. And how many people do you need in the different positions based on your staffing? So those all have to be considered.
I think there's an unintended consequence of cross-training at higher levels. Because if someone's going to fill in, like, like has been pointed out, they have to be, you know, to be willing or be assigned perhaps, they have to be at that higher level. And I guess the gray areas, kind of Melissa's in the position the board is in. When we talk about MOUs, you know, when do we tackle them? All at once, which I don't know when's that ever been done? Where there's been a countywide MOU? Or, or, you know, a hundred years ago when Pat Gill came on and there was a consultant that helped HR do a, a broad, you know, reevaluation of job descriptions. You know, job descriptions are one of those things where your department is just a few people and you tackle it kind of on an as-needed basis. And I understand the, the situation the auditor's bringing up where it's, it, it creates these second, third order effects across, you know, then other elected officials or department heads are probably thinking, I should be more proactive and cross-training my higher level employees. And pretty soon, like Spence said, why do we have clerk ones? Why is that a bargain for a position if, if that's not the expectation after a while? So I'd like to, I mean, I think we all understand the concept of what this is. I'd like to move on if we could.
Thank you.
Yes.
Move on, meaning move on from the topic?
To the next approval request.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Initially, when I was doing the budget for building services early on, I was not including any additional employees, although I knew the new LAC was going to be coming online. And I didn't know, I knew it was going to be a stretch, but I didn't know what the stretch was going to be. So I didn't think at that time it was fair to, to ask for additional employees when I didn't know what the need was going to be. I was basically going to wait and see what the need turned into. With, with, with the most recent turn of events Matthew spoke of earlier this evening, it's coming into realization that, that stretch is going to go way beyond what we can handle with the current staff. I still don't know what the actual amount of staff need will actually be. The two custodians, the one maintenance person is my best guess at this point. And so I know, I know that we can't get by with the current staff that we have with, with the need that we're looking at down the road with possibility of expanding those current detention areas. What I can also say is the, the new LAC is, you might say, someone might say, well, it's comparable. You're moving this department out there and this department out there, and you're no longer having it over here. You're just moving those areas and those people in. It should be a wash. It's not. A, a new building has, falls under new code requirements. The best example I can give you of that is restrooms. Code requirement on restrooms, there's a lot of code. One of the codes says, even if you, let's say you have an all male, for, for whatever reason, you have an all male staff. Okay, you need, let's just say code says you have to have, for this many employees, you need three restrooms in that area. Code also says if you're providing a male restroom, you have to provide an equal female restroom, even if you don't have an equal number of staff. And so I, I don't know the exact number, but we're probably moving from something like 20 restrooms to 70, just for that particular regulation. So to give you an idea of where I'm trying to place those people to do those jobs. I know you wanted to move on from the other subject, but I did agree with Mr. Gill when he said it falls down to contract negotiations. The ASME people that are in those contracts, their jobs are designated. And they are under union contract as being in that position. That is why the, that, that is why Pat made his statement. I also agree with Tina, and I can give you some past practice, that in building services, when a particular position no longer fit what the, what the department need was, we worked with HR and the union to change that classification. It may not, it may not be a clerk one or two anymore. It might be a whole new clerk hybrid, if you will. One of the struggles, and I don't know if Tina has this, but one of the struggles that arise is when you try to cross-train people. You might have one person that is an active participant, but you might have another person that says, look, that's out of the scope of my job duties. I'm not doing it. And flatly refuses and by right in the contract doesn't have to if they're under the ASME union. So that's a, it's a struggle and it's a, again, in past practice, that's why I work with HR, to change some of our categorizations to make them better fit. But thank you for your time.
Okay.
So the total ask for these two?
One eighty-eight.
Yep, one eighty-eight, that's benefits everything, and those have been verified with Michelle.
I'll move it, I don't see that we have a choice. I would like to see it come from the maintenance fund, but I've been told that that's not viable.
I'll second the motion.
The maintenance fund doesn't pay for maintenance.
Employees.
Well, this was the one thing, I was going to support on these, so.
I guess, are, are we okay, we already have a motion to second, taking action on this? Is there anything else after this one?
After this?
Yeah.
We've got emergency services, oh yeah, then we're done. Well, you gotta go back and review.
We're taking a hybrid approach then. We're, we're saying this is something we can't avoid.
Right.
And I think that's accurate. So a motion by Taylor, second by Ong, to approve the three new positions. And what does that total, Dennis?
Hundred eighty-eight thousand, zero, zero, eight.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed, say nay. Pass is five, zero. Emergency services. So now Dennis, are we, is it accurate to say we're, we were at approximately 256,000 underneath the rate and with this addition, we're now only sixty-seven?
Yeah.
All right, so we're about 67,200, not accounting for things we know that are coming. Go.
Scott Metz from Woodbury County Emergency Services. What I'm asking you to do is take clerk two to clerk three. I understand your point, valid point. My point is, is all the clerk twos, our clerk threes, aren't the same in the county. I couldn't take a clerk two from Kenny's department or the treasurer's department to do what our clerk two does. And vice versa. But when your clerk steps up to do more than their two do, then they should benefit from that. And I feel as, as the, as the director, that that is my job to come to you guys and say, hey, this is what, you know, they step up and do. Because with the clerk two that we have, with the medical background and the certifications, there's a lot of things that that clerk can do that's way above a clerk two by its description. So that's why I'm asking to, to change it from a clerk two to a clerk three position. Because that clerk two does do a lot more than just what a clerk two position is in Woodbury County. And you can see that. And that's been proven. And I do believe the past director did not do that position any good. Their, that person has gone out of their way to help me every day. And I can prove that. And, you know, with like management people, the amount of meetings that I have every week, who do you think takes care of the little things back at Climate Hill when I'm not there? Is that, is that, that clerk two? Any questions?
I understand the request. Any, any questions on specifics? To circle back on the broader topic, it would seem like, rather than approving requests this year, that year, every so often, when contracts are up, it would be helpful for the board to know and to have more definition from admittedly the board side and the union side on exactly what the budget impact is. And maybe at that point is when we should have more discussion on how many of each classification is needed. Just a thought. Because it seems like, you know, you know, this, this comes up every, every so often. And it would seem like a natural time to really tackle it. Any questions on the request? All right, what does the board want to do with the remainder? We have, what do we have remaining? We have the first item.
Veteran affairs and treasurer.
Can you go through the costs? We have veteran affairs at what?
Thirty-nine eighty-three, sixty.
Okay, and then?
Treasurer, thirty-two thousand, six, sixteen, and then emergency service, thirty-nine eighty-three.
So we have approximately forty thousand some dollars by reclassifying clerks in three departments or offices. Is that a fair statement?
Yep, forty thousand, five, sixty-three for these last three requests.
And this is maybe broader or more philosophical. My, I guess my worry is, I want to do all of these, but my, my worry is that we're going to have, we're going to start something that's not going to, to finish here tonight. And I feel like we're going to have a lot of, either upset people or people questioning, well, why am I here and not there? And I, my worry is, I feel like many times the boards tried to meet the needs only to find out that they've upset a whole host of other people they never intended to do. It threw good intentions and I guess my, I would like to see, and I'm not proposing to hire some expensive outside consultant, but to, to take a look and to maybe have all of these positions be looked at more holistically and, and possibly in two or three months, meet all of those needs. We could do it through gaming. At least this year, we have that sort of balance on hand. And maybe meet every one of the needs that's been put before us. But my worry and only hearing from a couple of department heads and an elected official is that we're going to have a couple more elected officials and three or more department heads saying, I've got 16 more people and 16 more requests and I just, that's my worry. I, I still want to meet those needs, but kind of want to look more holistically. It's just one guy's thoughts.
Right, so is it fair to say, from what I'm hearing, is it be better to not do any of this and go back to collective bargaining and the contracts are up?
Well, I guess, and, and/or have, have a look by somebody that's kind of a third party that says, you know, this position you're actually needing for these responsibilities and this meets that, where everybody gets a chance and it's not just, well, my elected official came and advocated for me and yours didn't, you know, that sort of thing.
Well, that's my concern, when I say, yeah, where's, yeah, where's everyone in this? Because it, it's being new, it just seems, I mean, if a union creates a contract, then is that contract supposed to determine pay? I understand the economics and economy markets shift between the three or four-year contract, you know, all that. But it just, I, I agree, I see, it seems like you keep, someone gets upset and then why not wait, yeah, wait? Get an outside, I agree with you, supervisor Taylor, yeah, wait on, wait on somebody, yeah, give an outside opinion, look at it, bring everybody to the table. I don't know if that made sense or not.
So one comment is, as I understand the collective bargaining process, I'm not an elected official who has the privilege to participate. But I am at the will of the decision, so in our department. And could I get on board with having it go back to a collective bargaining perspective if I was part of it? Because it directly impacts my office, then I could have a voice in that. But right now, my voice is going to be left to the board of supervisors who actually participate in that process. And if that's, I suppose, how you guys want to address it so that it's, it's held at that point, how do you understand the departmental and the operational needs of my department when I'm the elected official who is responsible for that department? So I'm the one who actually determines, has to determine the needs to be able to actually effectively operate, as does Otter DeGill in his department, as does Sheriff Sheehan in his department. We all are the ones that are, are doing that. So, you know, all I would have to say at that point is if, if the decision is made to go back to collective bargaining as the approach, then I want a voice in that and that voice wants to be mine. My voice, not. My voice, not my voice through this group up here.
Oh, right, I understand that, and I agree. It just, it just seems like there's a, and I'm, I'm learning with contracts and union contracts, it just seems like there, there's a loophole, or there's a, a, there's, I don't know, it just seems like there, there's a void somewhere. Because I mean, I, as a citizen, watching the board for the last nine years, I keep seeing these, the, every year, the improvement requests keep coming up, and I, it just, I'm just curious, it just seems like, why does this keep happening?
And, and one thing that I talked about earlier tonight was that in the Ask Me group that we have, we have a very diverse group of people. So it comes back down to the same thing before. I'm not here to comment on if Auditor Gil's staffing at a clerk two, a senior clerk or clerk, clerk three is adequate or not. That's his decision. He makes that determination as to what his department needs. Same thing with Building Services. Kenny has to make that decision, and when, when all of these staff members are in the same group, and we're stuck with this, we got a clerk two, again, like I said earlier tonight, how do we compare and who does it? Maybe, maybe it is HR's responsibility on the job descriptions, but how do you compare a clerk two in the Treasurers Department that has, that's such a forward-facing department with the clerk two at the Auditors Department who doesn't actually see the public in the same fashion? Now, the Recorder's Office, which falls underneath the, the Auditors, you know, sees a different level of, of, of the public. Again, I can't say that the clerk two at the Auditors Department doesn't, you, that, again, I don't, I'm not looking at that section of it. I'm looking at what we do in the Treasurers Department.
Right.
And then the board, through HR, writes the job descriptions that impact what exactly the duties are defined as, correct?
That is correct, and every time that there is a change in those job descriptions, we try to bring them forward to be approved. I would say, you know, back when collective bargaining changed, in the last contract that we had with the courthouse employees, there was a provision in there for when somebody worked in a different step, after so many days, they were paid the difference of that wage, going back those ten days. So, I don't know if that is what, or it probably was what led to, you know, other people having to be trained in a different position, but how often do they actually work that position? I guess would be a question too, so, that might be, you know, a solution to be able to gauge how often they do do those duties. When somebody's on vacation, when somebody's sick, when somebody's gone, I don't know. I'm just bringing up. I did.
The only point that I would make here is that you talked about the union hasn't disagreed. I've been on the other side of the table lots of times, and I never disagree when someone's going to get an improvement to their position. Because I know that once that happens, the pressure down here is going to be, they're going to continue to improve those positions and ask for those improvements.
But, but that's, that's the point. If as the department head or elected official, you feel your employees need to be moved up, then you should move, you have that right to come to the board and ask for that. Now, I'm not saying no, the other clerks two aren't the same way here in the county. I'm just saying that, you know, a clerk two that steps up and does more, if that department head or elected official notices that, then they do that. I'm not saying they don't now notice it, but if you step back and look at it, like in my case, you know, I come into it and say first. I seen it over the, the period of the eight months I've been there. So, I'm not saying that's different to anybody else, I'm just saying that I've seen that. So, I do agree that collective bargaining, they're not gonna tell no one they're trying to better an employee. Why would they? Because you're trying to better a person. Same thing while we're standing here tonight, ask first, we're trying to better people. I mean, we all want to better ourselves. And that is my point, as department head or elected official, if you notice it, and then you come to it, you board with the improvement. And ask for that because you can see that. As us, the department, as the official, we can see that, where you guys can't, because you don't see them every day. You know, in my department, there's two people there every day. A clerk two and myself. Everybody else are in twenty-four, seven, so they're there every third day. So, you know, that's, you don't realize that. You took at this group of people and you think, well, they're all time, and they're not. So, that's where I stand on it.
Certainly every department and office has a right to bring it to the board. And flip side is, the supervisors serve the whole county, not just one department, and it's that balancing act that we're trying to, I think fairly, come at this issue with, if there is a broader issue, and I think it's fair to say, I mean, if we were looking at one improvement request this year, for the Anthem clerk, I, I don't know if there'd be this sort of full-throated dialogue, but because we know there's an issue and we're looking at three offices and, and several affected positions, it kind of warrants a philosophical step back on what collective bargaining is meant to do and what, and how complete, you know, reevaluation of these job descriptions from HR should be at some point. And, and maybe more resources or time needs to be given to that, you know, to reach a level of fairness where there's a, you know, a call put out, and, and when the board takes action through something like gaming funds for one year, and then it's on the budget, we know that no one is left out of the discussion. And that is a tough thing to coordinate with all these needs that happen, but that's what I feel the board's position is, and if I'm wrong, then let me know. I'm hearing that we are denying these improvement requests remaining?
Yeah, I, I guess the only, not to beat the dead horse, but the only caveat would be, I don't, I'm, I'm open if we could have something in the next sixty, ninety days, hundred twenty, whatever that takes to look at not only these, but then also have other opportunities for department heads and elected officials who said it, you know, well, I, I didn't have a fair look, and then comprehensively. I just, I don't want the message to be that the door is closed, I don't feel like that is. I think we're open, or at least I'll speak for myself, but I don't want to just do it on a kind of an ad hoc basis. Want to do it more holistically and...
I agree with that. I'm open to it, I just want to have more information, look at it.
Does the board want to take no action on these items or move to deny?
I would take no action.
Okay. And there'll be no action taken on the remaining improvement requests, they'll not be scheduled for future budget hearings unless the situation changes or other facts come to light. Moving on. D is FY twenty-four CIP requests.
I'll leave the color sheet I handed on earlier. The meeting began, you can look through them, you can talk to people about them. They have to not be approved until they come to light, from this one year, July first twenty-three to two thirty of twenty-four. These are just information, we never approve at this point, we just receive. There's particular ones you want to talk about, we'll go through that, or just receive this schedule here, and go from there. Now, there is one we can knock out, though, when you get down to WCICC. WCCIC? Knock out the three fifty, and you knock out the fifth. That's four hundred thousand there that are going away, so I really did today.
Yeah, that C is in the wrong spot. The second of three Cs, yeah.
I'll be honest with you.
Wow, Dennis.
WCICC.
Throwing him under the bus.
Why didn't want to?
I, I don't want to get, I know we're late in the hour, I don't want to get too into the weeds, but just a couple of quick questions, Kenny. Sixty thousand for the Anthem office paint interior?
Um, yes, so...
Is that accurate?
Um, no, I would say that is an estimate. So when we ask for these, when I say we, I really mean Dennis and I, when we ask for an upcoming year CIP request, we send out an email to department heads. And we ask them, it's a form that we send out. CIP New Project Request Form. So we send this out in an email, we ask the department head to fill it out, if they have any CIP requests. I don't necessarily usually give much input on it, sometimes there's none. Some of the department heads, let's just say, Suen District Health, if you notice, that's a very distinct-looking number, sixty-seven, seven oh one. So some of these department heads will actually go out to a contractor or someone and say, hey, you know, we're looking at doing this, I want to, I want to basic ballpark figure on what this is going to cost me. So you'll see a number like that. Some department heads will turn in a number, like your, your question about Jeremy, and I, I would say to that, that no, that is a generalized number. And when we do these, when, sometimes when we do these CIP requests, they are generalized numbers.
That, that's fine, I just, it struck me as a little high.
And I would say, overall, there are probably some that are higher and some that are low.
Okay. And then?
Is it to prepare, sorry, is it to prepare for other associated costs? Like you don't know what else is going to come up, but you think
Yes.
there's, paint's going to be a big part of it, but it's, it can't all be for paint.
Right.
Right?
That would, that includes some of that. Also, some of the, the items you see in the bottom on red, I'd like to explain those quickly. The Trosper White Fire Brick really should be on this list, however, it wasn't included early on because when we were doing the CIP request, that wasn't a known issue. So that's why that item's there. The next item for Twenty-Eighth Street, that cannot be done as a CPI, but I listed it there to, just to keep it on everybody's purview, that that money is going to have to come from somewhere, it's, I don't want it to be a figure that is, that's going to be lost. The same with the LEC Food Service Contract Termination. Another figure that's not a CIP, but that money's going to need to come from somewhere. The Justice Center FFNE, we've talked about that several times, that's another number we need to keep track of. And you, and as far as the last item, that's already a twenty-twenty-three CIP that if we can ever get the architects and the engineers moving on, we would like to get started on. It has been just like wading through the mud to get something done there.
So for the board's action tonight, what are we doing?
Receiving.
That's it. And then it's two hundred eighty thousand for Emergency Services radios, is that an ARPA? Potential? Can you check?
Potential, I'll check on that one.
Please and thank you.
Also, we haven't addressed in any of our twenty-three or twenty-four CIP, is a structure out there?
Structure out.
Climbing hill. It needs a lot of repairs out there, there's a question.
Scott says it's in good condition. Huh? Scott says it's in good condition.
I will tell you that, this come out of our rates, we can prove that. No, the building does, like I said, the tuck pointing, we've got to decide what we're going to do. I mean, either we're, the county's gonna have to put the money into it, or not and do, and do something else. I mean, because if we don't do it, that's where, what I found out is that's why the roofs are leaking, because it's coming down into them grooves in the brick, and then it's coming down under the membrane. So that is true. And on the radios, we were just talking, that, two hundred eighty, that is at, my estimate at full cost. Because as of January first of twenty-twenty-four, if I'm, give me if I'm wrong, Motorola has a fifty percent off until that date, first state aisle. So that's why, that is the actual cost for mine to replace all the trucks and all the handouts. And we were just talking, we could do that together as a group deal.
Dan Heisler, conservation. Glenn Settevich at his retirement party pulled myself and my deputy director aside to talk to us about that concern on the radios, and I know, I've got my, I noticed, he said, you got radios in? I said, yeah, I do. And I had eight of them, and that was for the same reason, they're fifty percent off. They're no longer going to support the radios we have, and after twenty-five, the contract's no longer. So, that's why we put that request.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Up until what?
January first of twenty-four. The fifty, the fifty percent goes off.
I think there's a strong possibility we could use ARPA funds for this when it comes to emergency services. It's pretty broad with furniture, equipment, cars, things like that. I will check on that one also.
Can you come back to the board Tuesday with an answer on that? Thank you.
Yep.
Kenny?
I think, God, Dan wanted me to touch on really quickly, Dorothy Pico. We knew, knew about this a couple of months ago, and so I decided we probably should put it on a twenty-twenty-four CIP. But there is going to, there is a need to do some foundation work out there. Initially, we thought it was just some mud jacking that would be required to raise the floor. I've had two experts from two different firms come out and take a look. What we've got is some settling in the building that is now starting to make it difficult to open some doorways. So we reviewed that, when the experts came out and took a look, they told me mud jacking is not going to fix your issue, and your issue's going to get worse. And so, that project will be coming forward to the board, but it will be for a stabilization of the foundation. And basically what that includes is jacking up, if you will, a, a portion of the building and putting permanent stabilization, stabilization peers along the foundation wall. So, that will be coming forward, and Dan, I don't know if you want to include anything there?
No other?
Once again, BD, the building was built twenty-five years ago before Dan, and we were starting recognizing, I appreciate Kenny came out right away and looked at the problem, and got the professionals out there, and what we thought was going to be an easy fix, of course, turned into, it's going to be a nightmare because they need to get heavy equipment in there, they got to take out two of our retaining walls, which are actually a garden, but that's probably a good thing because they're having some issues, so we might as well include that in the project, we tear them out, bring the equipment in, and put them back as we leave, so. But yeah, just want to make sure. It's not a headache I wanted to bring forward to the board, but it is quite noticeable in the offices when the carpet starts separating and you start going downhill when you walk through my office manager's office, so. I just wanted to on that one.
So, is there a reason we have this where it's at? Because there's some of these things, I, you know, I wouldn't put sixty and sixty, and you know, I'd, I'd maybe reduce that by sixty and say thirty and thirty on the painting, you know, I know you guys were discussing that while I was in the other room, but things like a large monitor, I'd maybe do out of gaming or some other source rather than, you know, putting a five-year loan on a, a monitor.
I agree, so we'll have to reauthorize each one of these when we get an actual estimate, right?
But we're borrowing the money by receiving this at these dollars. That's what I'm saying.
I don't think that's, Dennis?
Yes.
Your CIP loan is based off what we approved here, right?
For next May of twenty-four.
Right.
So these can all change after July first, or they can all come forward to the board and prove one-on-one basis.
But we're gonna, we're gonna borrow that money.
In May of twenty-four.
Right.
We aren't borrowing on these estimates, we're borrowing on twenty-three, that's being currently done.
Dennis, you have to clarify, next, do you mean after this coming?
Yeah, these, these will be after July first of twenty-three. Then, these projects that are approved and done during the year, we borrow the money of May of twenty-four to levy the taxes.
So it does not affect the FY twenty-four tax asking?
No, does not. No.
But I, I think the question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, is if we're putting in, and we're receiving these total amounts, and we're putting in sixty for paint here and sixty for painter, does that make a difference, or does it only make a difference when we get an actual estimate of eight thousand one hundred fifty-three or whatever?
Actual estimate.
Okay.
These are just hypothetical numbers.
Until we actually re-receive a CIP request from an department head or elected official?
Correct. We borrow what the actual cost is. So again, this does not affect our tax asking next year, what we do- What we do in twenty-three for the rest of the year does affect the tax asking, just like today, we reduced, you know, the four hundred and fifty thousand and I got an updated number of that, it actually amounts to a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars instead of eighty-five, I went and did the amortization, that's what it's going to save us next year.
I wouldn't mind sticking forty grand or, you know, having them go out and take care of that Trosper Hoyt fire brick ASAP and having us pay for that out of.
You can pay that out this current year because we do have, actual expenditure is obligated about a million seven. I think we got two and a half million budget for the loan, I'll have to look again. So, we do have some flex there because we have to take four fifty off, so at least it's flex three, four hundred thousand.
Well, I'd love to see that Trosper Hoyt fire brick get done and then we can get everyone back into their offices over there and.
Yeah.
That you could probably do this year, absolutely this year, we're running fifth, January.
I was saying, I'd like, I'd like to see you just go ahead and do Trosper Hoyt's fire brick project and get that done.
We're already working on that.
Good.
So, we had to take an immediate response on that. Um, so what I've done is, um, we are getting the tools, the materials that we need uh for the fire brick and we're expensing it out of my budget for that building. Um, later on, we're going to come back probably and ask for a CIP request for a certain amount of money and transfer that money back into a CIP. Um, we'll, we'll have already expensed it, it's, it's just a moving of of the money around into a different fund.
Something like expensive paint, for instance.
Yes.
Six hundred bucks for five gallons, right?
Okay, so it's a work in progress item, um, I'll move to receive.
Second.
Second by everyone, but I'll give it to Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye, passes five zero. E is FY twenty-four overall budget review, we can take action on anything in the budget, but Dennis, there's two items we need to, that we already talked about. There's the energy savings for the equipment move and then there's the thirty thousand you mentioned.
Yeah, that has reduced the electric under building services for the courthouse here, fourteen thousand, five fifty-six reduction.
I'll move that.
Second.
Second by Taylor or, yeah, I'll give it to Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye, passes five zero.
And then we have revenue for refunds, we did not, I looked through the budget and I don't see anything for refunds, we budgeted thirty thousand. That money each come in, we're refunding it, we need to add revenue with thirty thousand.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Sound waves come faster from closer to the chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye, passes five zero, yes?
Also, we do have a compensation board recommendations.
Are we done with the budget?
This will be part of the budget because we have to add it all in now.
As far as things that you already had in mind to have us, okay. Okay.
Now additional, she has a percentages here, what I'm going to have her do is figure out what this is going to cost with, if it's all approved at this rate, which may or may not be, but we have to have in the budget like we did last year.
Right.
And then we back it off wherever, leave it the same at the public hearing. So, she'll give me an estimate on that, how much that's going to cost.
We can find that out later, that's fine.
Percentages, okay.
Um, by my running tally, which may have some rounding errors and and such, but I think we're at about ninety-four thousand, two hundred dollars uh tax rate decrease at this point.
And and what I'll do is tomorrow morning, we could put all the change that we've got in here and send you out all tally sheet.
Yep.
Show you where we're at.
Dennis, can you just, sometimes we get into the, to the weeds or we see the trees and and zooming out. Take us back eight weeks ago or whatever it is that we started, what was the, what was the figure that we needed to be able to close to get to this rate?
To get this rate?
Or to get to a zero percent tax increase.
I got the red, somewhere, I have the red, here they are. When we started, we had to make up, if I can find, I have too much paper laying around.
I want to say six point three, six point eight, yeah, with improvement requests.
For countywide, after we took off the allowable growth, we're six point two six eight million and then we had a million one forty to help offset that six point two eight for our countywide to keep the rate the same.
So, that's what we've had to reduce over the last several weeks?
Reduce and you, yes, two various options.
Not counting improvement requests at approximately five hundred something.
Right, I'll have to add those in, right.
Okay. All right, um, any other budget items, anyone has any bright ideas on at this point? What's scheduled for, is there any budget review items scheduled for next week?
Yes, there's one called medical examiner.
Right.
And we're having a conference call tomorrow with uh Scott and, well, Mr. Welley.
Okay.
On that. Otherwise, all we have left is medical examiner, wage plan employees and we'll figure out what to plug in for the elected official deputies. We'll have that for you, I'll plug it in the tally sheet so you know what it is.
And the board is able to take up wage plan employees at any point between now and February fourteenth?
Correct.
That's when we publish the budget?
Yep, I have to send it to the, put it in the forms, send it to them.
Where do you have it slated in right now?
Um, the fourteenth and we have a public hearing on the seventh. That's our tax asking that we're required to do, when we exceed two percent, we exceed that because global growth is over two percent.
February seventh?
Yes, after that one, I have to publish for the regular whole budget. First one, just the tax asking involves general, basic, general stuff and real basic on the seventh. The second will be the entire budget and that's where, we can't go any higher, but we can go lower. And there are possibilities, you know, talking with Chad, he may have some possibilities, possible more savings maybe and depends where our negotiation go with the other part.
And and you're talking about the hospitalization quote for that contract, okay.
ACH, yes.
Um, does the board have any opinion on on when we take up uh wage plan? We are starting earlier next week due to another item. But we have until the fourteenth if we want to simply have regular board meetings for a while.
Yep.
What is the preference?
I think that'd be good, I don't see a reason to hurry.
Okay.
A reprieve would be, a reprieve would be good to just.
Four thirty next week?
No, three thirty, since we have Neapolitan Labs presenting.
Okay, yep.
Three thirty next week, um, anything else for the good of the county order?